Okay. Congress meeting order, flag to the flag, Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you. Yeah, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Again, everybody remain standing for a moment of silence for the folks who were involved in that horrific accident up the road on Sunday night. Please have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Leggett?
Here.
Mr. Diamond?
Here.
Mr. McDevitt?
Here.
Ms. Brainerd?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Driscoll?
Here.
Mrs. Frazier?
Here.
Mr. Drossi?
Here.
Ms. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Dickinson?
Here.
Mr. Marino? Mr. Strau?
Here.
Mr. Wild?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Runyon? Chairman Garrity?
Here.
Form is established.
First item of business tonight would be a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2022 meeting. Motion by Supervisor Bruno, second by Supervisor Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a couple of presentations to make. The first one will be to Otto Miller. And on behalf of the Warren County Board of Supervisors, in recognition of outstanding effort and tendency demonstrated in achieving associate degree in criminal justice and political science from SUNY Adirondack. Otto overcame a challenges in his life to go to college, and he tells me tonight that he's going to continue and go on and hopefully work for Homeland Security in some position. So on behalf of the Warren County Board of Supervisors, it's my honor to recognize Otto Miller. Like saying.
Well, though I'm taking up too much time because I know it's an important night. Everyone's here advocating for themselves, I see, and that's very important. And that's something that I learned, and that's what led me to here really was because I learned that in order to help other people, you have to really invest in yourself. And I took that step, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank those who helped me along the way. So my parents are here, my mother Sarah, my dad Edward, who've helped me, of course. Some other people I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank, of course, the board for recognizing me this year for receiving this award. Also Taylor Testa, he's the Director of Student Engagement Diversity Initiatives at SUNY Adirondack, as well as I'm sorry, Rachel? Rachel, I always want to say Rochelle, and it's like in my head. So yeah, I wanted to thank you, of course, for your help, and John Strau for sitting on the Board of Trustees for 15 years of SUNY Adirondack. So thank you to everybody, and I hope that everyone here tonight continues to, of course, you know, keep fighting the good fight and advocate for yourself, and don't ever stop moving forward because we'd be remiss if we didn't, right? So thank you, everyone.
Okay, our next award we have, I would ask the board, in keeping with the rules of the board, proclamations must be approved by a vote of the Board of Supervisors. Without objection, I would like to move that we vote on a proclamation including your folder tonight, which will honor Mr. Michael Biddle. So motion by Mr. Wild, second by Mr. McGowan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Harry? Okay. Mr. Biddle. I'm not going to read all this because he thinks all you are here for his recognition. Thank you, everybody. But Mike's been instrumental in working with Warren County in many aspects of what's going on during the pandemic. He worked on tourism, the business community, did a great job. And if I had my others, I'd only have one whereas on this plaque. But I'll just read the one, "Resout that I, Kevin B. Garrity, Chairman of Warren County Board of Supervisors, on a majority vote of Board of Supervisors, do hereby offer heartfelt thanks to Michael Biddle for his years of assistance to residents and businesses in Warren County, and wish him the very best for a long and happy, healthy retirement." Michael is one of the smart ones, maybe, and I believe he's moving south. So Mike, on your behalf as board.
Thank you. Chairman, thank you, supervisors. I can't thank you enough, and CSEA, thanks for coming out tonight for me and Otto. I really, really appreciate that. So supervisors, it's been a joy and a privilege to serve with you these past four years. And I know you're going to continue to carry the torch of supporting the businesses in Warren County, which affects our greater community, our quality of life, our education, our workforce. The beauty of this region, as we say time and again, aren't just the mountains. It isn't just Lake George. It isn't the whole of Warren County. It's our people. Please always remember that whenever you vote, whenever you do something, do it for the good of our people. I can't thank you enough for your leadership through COVID. Couldn't have been partnering with anybody better than you all supervisors, but Ryan Moore as well, and several other business folks that stood up in the community. I thank you so, so very much. I wish you so well. Thank you for your service because you don't get thanked enough. And I, of course, always want to say as I end, God bless.
I think, sure.
Bill, I just want to firstly thank you. We've become really close friends, and you know, I really always appreciated talking with you and working along with you and all the things that we have done. But I hear this rumor. Mike Biddle, President of the United States. Thank you again.
Thank you, Supervisor McGowan. Thank you so much. So Vice President McGowan, I can't thank you enough.
Have your time.
Good luck. Thank you all.
Next, we have another presentation. During the spring 2022 semester, the Criminal Justice Student Internship Pathway, a collaborative between Warren County Queensberry High School and SUNY Adirondack, was launched. To earn college credit, interested students were required to spend 40 hours onsite with various Warren County departments, as well as in the courtroom, and provide a holistic view of the many faucets of the criminal justice system. We would like to thank staff from the Public Defenders, District Attorney, Probation, and Insurance Department for their time and effort in making this program successful. With that said, I would like to recognize three students who I don't believe are here tonight. Elise. Oh, they are here. Okay, Elise Brain, Nathan Angle, and Cassandra Potter. So I have some certificates. Their instructor, Don Nahar. Don? And you are? Elise. Congratulations. And then we have the other two, three other two students. You would like to share some of your how would you like it, or?
I like it.
Thank you. We hope you consider that career in the future. Okay. Now we're going to open up the privilege of forum public comment. I'm going to ask the union, CSEA union representatives, please just state your name for the record, and you can address us at the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Beal, and I work as a social welfare examiner in the Medicaid Unit of Warren County DSS. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and share with you some of my thoughts and reflections on the current state of our workplace. I was first hired by Warren County eight years ago. The reason that I took this job and that I haven't left for greener pastures in all the years since is my vocation for public service. My mission when I come to work each day isn't to sell the most widgets or generate the most profit. It's to serve my neighbors and all of our constituents to the best of my ability. While my role is far less visible, now, is there? No, okay. All right. So while my role is far less visible than a board supervisor, a department director, or a county judge, my mission is the same as all of ours, and I'm proud of the work I do to contribute to our common goals. Tonight, I come before you to discuss circumstances that are compromising our mission and holding Warren County back from being able to serve our constituents to the best of our ability. To give just a couple of examples, we have seniors that are at risk of going hungry as we are forced to rely more and more on fewer cooks and meal site managers. This shortage of cooks and managers has persisted systemically for years, which this board itself has labeled a desperate need in a recent press release. And yet, with six open positions at our meal sites and four more at the countryside adult home, we are perpetually one small scheduling mishap away from disaster. And despite this urgency, we continue to offer compensation for these positions so far under market value that even one of our managerial candidates will earn nearly 10% less than a high schooler working their first ever job at a fast food chain. Second, our elderly and disabled adults, as well as the vulnerable children in our community, receive suboptimal services despite the heroic efforts of the DSS services staff. Since 2019, we've employed 47 different CPS caseworkers to fill 17 positions, which works out to an entire staff turnover approximately once every 14 months. Currently, our most veteran CPS caseworker has been in their job for less than two years. As a result, an entire floor of caseworkers, from adult protective services to foster care and adoption, is consistently pushed to put off and neglect their own job responsibilities so they can support CPS on an emergency basis in situations where there is no one else who can step in. These two positions I highlighted, one of them grade two and the other one grade 16, are just a sample of the problems we find across all levels of Warren County civil service. In all departments from DPW to DSS, from public health to DMV, and at all levels, from clerks to staff to supervisors, there is a pattern emerging. Time and again, we see many units chronically understaffed or with staff so new, they have not had time to complete their onboard training and master their job responsibilities. So why do we have such problems with hiring and retention? It isn't for lack of effort. This board is approving job openings. They're spending to advertise them. They're running civil service tests. Nor is it that job candidates today are less civilly minded than they were 10 or 20 or 30 years ago. The hundreds of us still here remain precisely because we believe so much in the work that we do. Instead, the problem is that it has become harder and harder to live in this community and support a family on the salaries that Warren County offers. Consider the following. Inflation has been growing at record rates for more than a year now, averaging 5% in 2021 and more than 8% so far in 2022. While wage growth has matched and surpassed inflation in the private sector, county employees have received average raises of 2.6%, which, when coupled with the responsibility to pay for a greater percentage of their health insurance premiums, has kept salaries for many of us flat. By keeping raises small for year after year and contract after contract, Warren County has dug itself into a deep hole in compensation compared with its peers, let alone with the private employers that we're competing with. As an example, Livingston County, which is the most similar county to us in New York in terms of economic demography and size, pays its county employees on average 16% more than we do for the same positions. Now, I realize that you might hear this and be tempted to think it is merely evidence that Warren County is a strong negotiator and a good steward of the people's tax dollars. On the contrary, by pushing back so hard and for so long against adequate employee compensation, the county has damaged its long-term ability to provide the essential services that it needs to provide in order to achieve its purpose. The unfortunate bottom line here is that it is no longer even possible for Warren County to hire a full staff to carry out all of our core functions. Instead of having desirable jobs that qualified, dedicated professionals compete over in the tradition of a functioning civil service, we post and repost vacancies. We test and retest and call applicants from years ago, hoping to find someone, anyone, who is willing to accept a job at vastly below market rates. And even when we succeed, we spend more than $100,000 on salary, benefits, and training for new hires in their first year, only to see many of them jump ship as soon as a market rate job offer comes along, all thanks to that training and experience that we provided them. Now, I'm aware that in difficult economic times, it's not the best look for me to come up here before you asking for more money. But as I mentioned at the start, if it was about the money for me personally, I would already be working somewhere else. Like you all, I'm here putting in the work necessary to keep our government functioning and doing everything I can to make a difference in our community. However, I cannot begrudge those who choose to work elsewhere since the fact remains that no amount of civic mindedness can put food on a family's table, put gas in their car, or pay their utility bill. Like our DPW colleague expressed so poignantly at a previous meeting, it is a shame that so many county employees are eligible for and actually need to use county welfare programs just to simply go on living in this community. And so, all I can do is come here tonight and ask you to take another look at this situation. Take in the stories of all the ways our county is falling short. Dig into the numbers. Look at the cost of marketing and hiring and training and turnover our county incurs constantly by committing to the lowest possible wage. Compare Warren County's approach to compensation with other more successful municipalities, and set us up for success by investing in our people, building out our staff, and turning things around. Thank you again for giving me the chance to speak tonight.
And we have another rep from CSEA.
A lot shorter than he is. So first of all, I want to say that we're all wearing purple. First, my name is Chris Connell, and I'm the CSEA Unit 9,000 president. I also work for Warren County Social Services, and I've been there for eight years. We're all wearing purple tonight because in support, just wanted to show solidarity and to recognize Elder Abuse Awareness Day. So over the past few months, at various committee meetings, department supervisors have informed you of the need to address the wages of Warren County only to be met with Warren County employees, only to be met with the same response, a concern for the burden of the taxpayers. So I am here to ask you a simple question. Which is the lesser taxpayer burden? Is it providing a fair and competitive wage to county employees so that the county can recruit and retain dedicated competent staff? Or is it a lesser burden to have unpassable winter roads and crumbling infrastructure with a fleet of trucks and piles of blacktop sitting in Warrensburg because there is no one to man the trucks or perform the work? Is it less of a burden to have an elderly population in need of long-term residential housing go homeless because there is no one to provide care and supervision? Is it less of a burden to have the county campus grounds and flower beds overgrown and dilapidated, or the interior of the county buildings filthy because there was no one to maintain them? Is it less of a burden to the taxpayer to have no one step forward during a viral pandemic to risk their health and the lives and their lives to test the population or provide vaccination against disease? Or to have the hometown suffer and potentially die because there was no one there to dress their wounds or provide needed medical care? Is it less of a burden to the taxpayer to conduct DMV transactions online or to go to a neighbor in county causing loss of revenue because there is no one to assist them in this county? Is it less of a burden to the taxpayer to have the homeless and needy loitering at the beautiful beaches, doting the queen of American lakes, or loitering in downtown Glens Falls on Glen Street and South Street? Is it less of a burden to have the taxpayer to have less of a burden to the taxpayer to have terminally ill, abused, exploited, chronically mentally ill, elderly infirmed, mentally or intellectually challenged, and are alcohol and drug dependent adults who left to fend for themselves, go unassisted, untreated, and suffer? Is it less of a burden on taxpayers for children to go unsupported by an absent parent, go hungry, be exploited, or abused? This may, these words may sound like the words out of a dystopian fiction novel, but do not fool yourself. Without the dedicated staff that's here tonight, all wearing purple, shielding these situations from you, this could become the unpleasant reality that your monetary blindfolds can no longer hide from you. We remain dedicated from shielding the taxpayers of Warren County from these harsh realities. However, your inactions may very well rip the last penny of dedication from our wallets. And then in addition, I did want to add that it would be nice if we could have, if you guys held more evening meetings like this, because I mean, it allowed a lot of us to attend. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Linda Morgan. I'm from the fraud unit at DSS. I'm going to be honest, I'm not a public speaker. You can tell by what they had compared to what I have here that this is way out of my comfort zone. I'm only here because I care. It's important. I feel a sense of responsibility to shed some light on some of the more personal situations that my fellow coworkers contend with. Staff shortages directly affect employees and our clients on a level that not everyone is aware of. These are the things we don't talk about. And I'm going to give you an example, and I'm going to tell you why I'm here, because these are the things that pain me. Last Sunday night, a coworker of mine lost a close friend of 33-plus years. She had to come to work the next day and was not afforded the opportunity to grieve the loss of her lifelong friend. That was because they were down four people. She knew by taking that time off that she would place a burden on her already compromised unit, and she couldn't do it. A few weeks ago, I was taking a walk in the halls, a luxury that some of my coworkers don't have. I ran into a young lady, and I recognized her face. I don't know her personally. We don't get to do that anymore. But she was sobbing. She could barely stand. I knew that I needed to go help her. She told me she was at her breaking point. She told me that she hadn't had a lunch break in months. She told me that she's taken on two additional jobs as a single mother, and her kid is left often home alone to fend for himself. It's disgraceful. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak with one of our new hires. He's been on the job roughly three months. I asked him how it was going. He was pleasant. He felt supported by supervisors and his coworkers. He was optimistic about his future here at DSS. However, he mentioned that he's been shaving time off of his lunches. I asked him, why are you doing that? You're entitled to your lunch. Take it. Relax. You need to de-stress. And he stated, and I quote, "So that I don't have this work lingering in my mind or hanging over my head when I go home to my family." I'm just wondering, and I'm concerned, am I going to see him in three more months? Or is it going to be another face crying in the hallway? Yesterday, I was in the lunchroom. Another coworker entered, crying at her breaking point, said she was quitting. She had had it. She's not sleeping at night for fear of not meeting deadlines. Feeling the impact of carrying those burdens alone because her unit two is three short. Never mind the fact that her supervisor is out because she lost her immediate family. There are so many other stories like this. We have people that are surviving cancer, going through chemotherapy, going out in our field every day to our most vulnerable population and their most vulnerable state to serve people. These people have the time to take, but there's nobody to do their job. And they know that if they don't do it, people suffer. I mean, we have two people, two meal prep workers, I think a grade two, doing the job of six. They're pulling in cleaners and aides, again, taking away from the people that we serve so that they can make 175 home-cooked meals a day. Then to hear somebody say, well, you have overtime. You get overtime. Well, number one, not everybody gets overtime, okay? Number two, not everybody wants it. Number three, they need a break. They have families of their own and second jobs. It's not about overtime. It's one idea of the language that we hear on a regular basis around the office. I feel like I'm buried in a hole, and I only have a toothbrush to dig myself out. I'm overwhelmed. I'm waiting for the next shoe to drop. I haven't taken a break or a lunch break for several months, and I don't see an end in sight. I feel like I'm on life support, hoping and praying someone will pull the plug. I'm at my breaking point, and I don't know what to do. It's not the job. I like my job. It's the workload. I don't have time to read my training manuals, and I'm losing hope. Everyone, including supervisors, are stretched so thin. I have nothing left to give. Again, it's not the stress of the job. It's the lack of the time in the day to do the job right. of the time in the day to do the job right. Many of us at the county are working on bare minimums, minimums, hanging on by a thread. Morale is down. We're tired. We're broken. It's unbearable. It's unethical. It's illogical. It's unconscionable. It's immoral. It's unbelievable. It's unacceptable. And most of all, it's avoidable. We are suffering. Our families are suffering, and our most vulnerable clients are suffering, and that's not okay. You may wonder, why do we stay? I can tell you, it's not to get rich. It's not the money piece. None of us would be here if that were the case. We care. We're loyal. We're committed. We're invested. We're dedicated. We have a sense of duty, a call to service, a desire to help children, families. This is not just a job for us. Someone asks, well, why don't you take the lunches? Well, to be honest with you, sometimes we're dealing with, do we take Mrs. Jones, who's riddled with cancer, to her doctor's appointment that I canceled last week to cover for CPS, or do I have a sandwich? Besides the obvious that we're overworked and understaffed, we often make choices for ourselves and put others first, important choices and choices that we know might impact the people that we're serving. If we're not there for our older elderly population, they don't have anyone. When they come to us, that's it. That's all they have. And so if we're putting them on hold to go take care of another unit, they're being neglected. They're often missing trips to the grocery store. Despite the agency's best attempts and best efforts, including our administration and staff, we are barely holding the line. Not for long. We are sinking ship. We are unraveling at fast pace. This is not about the almighty dollar. We understand the board's responsibilities to the taxpayers. We are taxpayers. That's not your only responsibility, though. You have a responsibility to us as well, to the services that we provide. The staff shortage due to low salaries is suspect is affecting the quality of services that we're providing. Everyone is suffering. There was a time when people were dying to get in the county. Well, guess what? They're dying to get out. Let me put you through some pain, just a few more minutes with my shaky voice and...
You're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you. Just asking you, those of you who care, and I know many of you do, many of you do. I've heard the conversations. I've talked to you personally. Come up with a solution. And for those of you who don't, maybe ask yourself why you're still here. Because we're a team. It doesn't work without you. If we don't have the support from our board, none of it works. Now, I'm not suggesting that you have all the answers or that all of this is your fault. But I tell you what, you hold a huge piece of the solution. Do the right thing. Lessen the load. You have the power. You have the means, and you have the ability to do so. We are placing our faith and trust in you all to do what's fair and just. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Cecily Berlin-Game. I started working for Warren County as a dishwasher at the Westmount Health Facility. More than 10 years and five promotions later, I am now a welfare fraud investigator, a grade 11 for Warren County Department of Social Services. I am also a potential welfare recipient of Warren County Department of Social Services. I currently qualify for services as a grade 11 after 10 years. In a previous board meeting, exit interviews were discussed and what kind of information they were able to obtain from the departing employees. Right now, I would like to personally invite every single one of you to read my exit interview, as I will be personally and formally submitting my resignation. I have never felt so undervalued in my life. I have worked too damn hard to need to come up here and beg to help to heat my home. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ron Briggs. I represent CSA. I'm the Capital Region President. So I cover from Clinton County down to Columbia Green. We have about 30,000 members in that area. I'm here, I was going to write a speech, but it has written itself, right? You say Mr. Otto is a great guy, and he says, invest in yourself and others, right? You say Mr. Biddle's a wonderful man, and he says, it's not the lakes, it's the quality of life, it's the workforce in this county. You're the ones who said he's a great guy. I didn't, right? So you can hate me at the end of the day for my speech. You said these things. You approve these things. I'm here to talk a little bit about the people in this room. I've met some of them. But just quickly, before the meeting started, I went down the row and just asked, what is your feeling? If you could give me a word or a couple of words about your employment, how do you feel about your employment at Warren County? I will tell you, on the list, there was not one positive. And that's problematic for all of you and for every resident of this community. Because if this community doesn't work, as Mr. Biddle pointed out, no other place will work. Because if the roads aren't plowed, no one goes to work. So it was disappointed, underappreciated, taken advantage of, underpaid, undervalued, despondent, desperate, tired, frustrated. How do we keep going over the same thing without this board doing some action? Now, I'm, I, I don't know what has been said. I only hear things, right? So I've heard that they're waiting for CSA. I am standing here as the region president, saying, you're not waiting for us, right? And if anyone's heard that, that's not true. I am telling you, if you want to pay these people in this room and everywhere in your jurisdiction more money for the valuable services they have, we can sign something right now allowing that to happen. Great words, right? In my opinion, what I have heard is a shell game, right? Well, we want to open the contract, and you won't let us open the contract, blah, blah, blah. I, there are ways to do this. I have a 25-year employee. I negotiated a long, a lot of contracts in Fulton County. I know how to negotiate a contract. I know that you can do a memorandum of agreement outside of opening it. And if you don't want to do any of those things, then we will agree to open a contract for one item only, and that is pay raises. If you're ready to do it, we're ready to do it. And I don't know why we can't get this done. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board tonight? Please step up.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Daly. I work for DPW. Now that we know who's on the board to discuss contracts, I had one of the supervisors tell me tonight, we work slow. That's what I was told tonight by a supervisor in this room. So now that I know that you're on the board, Mr. Garrity, let's set a date to open this up and start negotiating.
All I can tell you is after our last meeting, we told you we would reach out to the union, and we are going to reach out to the union and get something going.
Sooner or later, someone's got to reach out.
We, I told you we would do that, and we are in the process of trying to get this settled and what what you want. Mr. Briggs just said you can do either one. So we'll, we'll discuss it.
Within a week's time, I'll hold you to it. Thank you.
My name is Jessica, and I work for Warren County DPW. I don't have a purple shirt on, but I am a member. I work out of the South End apartment, Queensberry area, which most of the supervisors here, I think I've dealt with. Roads won't get plowed. We have six trucks, two 550s. We have eight people. What do you want us to do? When your children can't get to school, you can't get to work, people delivering meals can't get to work, what's going to happen? You're going to call our boss, complain. Everybody knows. Put it nicely. Crap rolls downhill. Comes to me. I jump on my guys. My guys are limited. We have nowhere near enough people to work two shifts, which everybody says, split the shifts. How can you with eight people and six trucks, two 550s? Everybody's driven Queensberry. You know the intersections. How many backing accidents has there been with Queensberry trucks, county trucks, Glen's Falls trucks backing up trying to hit an intersection? Our mechanics are stretched to the limit, trying to fix everything that breaks down, get it out in a timely manner. Washington County just got a raise. I understand they're Teamsters. They're not CSA. But is anybody driven across Vaughn Road off of Dix Ave? A $3-an-hour raise with a $2,000 bonus? And Kevin, I'll address you because I know you know I've done paving. The road came out absolutely horrible, and that's what they got, was a nice bonus, nice raise for a crappy job. We're stretched to the max to pull out even a work zone on a road. Most of you people know where Call Street is. We do a lot of work over there. Everybody knows there's crashes there, wintertime, summertime, whenever. I have eight people, and that's including myself, to set up a work zone, have somebody in a piece of equipment, two full-time flaggers, a person to give the flaggers a break. Lunch, we don't see it. Maybe 1:30, 2 o'clock, we'll pick up the work zone and head out. Go back to the shop and sit. Yeah, we're going to do that. We don't get our 15-minute breaks. We don't get our half hour. You know, people drive by. Oh, they're sitting on the side of the road. Yeah, because two people are doing the job of six, digging a hole. I mean, I have no issues calling upon help, and we're beyond help now. You guys need to do something.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Please come up so we can get you on.
Hi, my name is Kim, and I'm one of the nurses for the CHOP, CHOP part of public health. When I started five years ago, there were 17 nurses in our staff. Currently, there are five nurses and one LPN. We were able to see at least 60 people a day at that time with other incidences that we had going on. Now, if we can see 24 to 28 people in a day, it's a good day. We've lost a lot of revenue because we cannot accept new cases. We did make money for the county. We are not making the money we can make. We are invested, the last five and our LPN are invested in the county. We have tried to maintain our patient satisfaction, increase their survey results. We need help, just like everybody else in this room. We've had positions open since before COVID. Nobody is knocking on our door. We help you and your family. We want you to help us so that we can stay here and be proud of our county again. I beg you to look at the people that are in this room that are suffering. It's $5 a gallon to get to work. Some of us come from the north part of the county. It's, it's a terrible burden to bear when you have to figure out, am I paying my electric bill, or am I paying the water bill this month? It's just not right. You do have the power to change this. You should change it. You should invest in your employees because they are all loyal. They've all met here tonight to stress how much they want to stay. Respect that, please. Please.
I am Carolyn Darcy, Case Manager, Countryside Adult Home. I've also spent some time in Human Services, working in temporary assistance, being there in NTA and working closely with other units. I can tell you, everyone over there was extremely and still is extremely dedicated, extremely dedicated to their jobs, and they're working very, very hard through all of this, through the pandemic, through everything. In the last year, I have had the privilege to become the Case Manager for Countryside Adult Home, working with some of the strongest women I have met in my life. These women have been there 10, 20, 30-plus years, making such a small amount of money for doing such a huge, huge job. Together, we, we've discussed, and we at Countryside are asking you to open your eyes to what we've seen as several years of neglect and oversight to our facility, and most importantly, the dedicated employees who always seem to have, have to play second fiddle to everyone else within the county.
Anyone else?
Evening, everybody. My name is Richard Toll, Warren County DPW. I just want to say that all you people in here are intelligent people. You didn't get to where you were by not knowing your job, but we know our job, too. Kevin Hayes, Todd Bednell, Jessica Barton, James Owens, they rely on me for a lifetime of driving trucks to teach a lot of the young that come in to drive the trucks. Mr. Garrity, I'm sure you're aware of how much they cost to buy you a new truck here, $200, $300,000 state bid. Some of them kids that come have never even driven a stick shift vehicle, because that's what you're attracting with the pay, okay? I'm not saying that we don't need young help. We definitely do need young help. Guys like me need young help to help me, okay? So what I would just like to touch on besides that is, my wife works in the Treasurer's Department. She's been there three and a half years. She has taken the tests. She has moved up to be a principal, which is a grade 10. Her name is on the lists for all the canvassing, and the college canvassed her quite recently to become a senior clerk, which is three grades below. Starting pay for a senior over at the college is more than $2 an hour to start for a grade 10 to lower to go to that position, and she's been here three and a half years. So something's wrong with the pay grade there. Now, I'm also to the understanding that all you guys and women are fiscally managing our money in the county, I'm a taxpayer too, very well, and that's very well appreciated. But you also have to manage the rank and file and their pay to keep quality help, good help, to keep your long-term people that know where, like Lehman's, electrician. long-term people that know where, like Lehman's Electrician, I'm sure he could tell you 100 spots that you have been here a long time, wouldn't even know where certain power spots are. He's the only electrician we got, for the whole place. He's getting ready to retire. That's just one example, okay? Back to what I was saying, I know we are a very financially solvent county. I know to the understanding that everybody in this room voted and passed to put $15 million into a wealth management fund for the county. Am I wrong in saying that?
I, I don't know. Do you know anything about that?
That's the information I get from the treasurer's office and it's public knowledge from what I understand.
The investment policy was recently modified to allow existing funds to be in an account.
I'm a simple truck driver, okay? I'm a simple truck driver. Let's just get it straight. I'm a simple truck driver, okay? You put money someplace that this county had to earn money for the county, correct?
No, it's cash. It's cash that the county has at any point in time for making payroll, for making.
My long-term point is, I understand that there's like another $14 million that, because you're so financially fiscal, besides what the federal government has sent to here to help us. My point is, I don't feel, being a simple truck driver, but I can add one on this too, I don't feel that there would be any better time than the present for everybody in this room to take this matter up and do the right thing and bring us up to, not better than anybody else, bring us up to standard salaries like Washington County, like Saratoga County, and the surrounding counties and towns, because I see it on my hand, first level, a lot of the kids that I'm training, young guys I'm training and stuff, they go to Queensberry, they go to Bolton, they go to Horrigan. After they've been here quite a little bit, and we spoke this morning about training and everything, or earlier, I'm sorry, about the training and what it costs us and everything, and then we lose these people. I think we all know where the problem lies, and I am not in any way blaming anybody in this room. I'm just saying I know that the people in this room can make a difference and make it happen. And this guy right here is willing to talk to you.
Right.
My name's Nancy Ross. I worked for Warren County as of last week for 30 years. Word, everybody, say what they've had to say, and Michael, that was amazing, and the rest of you. What I would like to ask now is for each supervisor to give us a commitment that they will help us do something right now in this process. So can you go around the room, and each one of you, tell all of these people in this room that you will make a commitment to make this better? Can anybody tell me?
Well, I can tell you, Nancy, that we, I told you the last time Mr. Daley was here, we were gonna work on it. Now, there's been communications exchanged, maybe it hasn't moved fast enough. Mr. Briggs said they're willing to sit down with us, we'll have to come up with a plan. But it's like I said, you know, I've done a lot of these negotiations, I've sat across the table from a lot of you people. My brother worked for DPW for a number of years, and I understand, and being a town supervisor, we understand that the county is lagging behind a little bit in pay, so we're. I mean, I gotta admit, it's the truth. We know that people left DPW to go to the towns. We're gonna work on it. We know that the nurses are struggling right now. And we know Countryside, they do a remarkable job up there. And the county is putting a lot of money in Countryside to bring it up to speed, so. But I can tell you, if, within a week's time, we'll be reaching out to somebody to set up some negotiation session.
I know you guys all do a hell of a job, we all know that. So let's hold them to it, and let's all go back to our jobs tomorrow and give it hell.
No, we do appreciate what you're doing. Yes, Seaver.
I'd like to honor Nancy's request, and I'm happy to go second.
Sure. Anybody else?
We are accountable.
Yeah.
And it isn't a week's time, it isn't in the last four months, five months. I've been on the board since 2014, but I've been an employee here since 2000. It's heartbreaking. It breaks my heart to hear someone say that there are, that so many are that you didn't hear today on services that are leaving, that when they take the time to do an exit interview, we as supervisors don't even see the exit interview. We ask you all, what do you want to tell the board, and we don't even find out what you've said.
We don't know that you don't see it.
I know you don't. And where's Linda? I know that Linda, last year I spoke to her. So she came to us and she said, there's all this red tape around tuition reimbursement. What is happening? We went through DSS, it wasn't just Linda, it must have been 10 or 15 different people, because every single day I was here with the door open until 9 o'clock at night, asking how we can make things better. And last meeting, we heard, we heard from you and you said, I sent a letter. Yeah, and we gave it to our county attorney's office, and we bring it on to our new leadership. But many of us were removed from committees, we were removed from union negotiating teams. We were removed from positions of authority where we could help and we could advocate. And I will admit, I am much like the woman that spoke to us from DSS, who is fighting as hard as she can but ready to give up. And I am so sorry, and I know I only represent Queensberry, but Warren County has been my family since 2000, and you don't treat family like this. And we heard last month, I heard Supervisor McDevitt say, we'll give our leadership 24 to 48 hours. Well, that time has come and gone, it's too late. We lose great people. And giving all the training in the world isn't going to cut it. And I don't know why you weren't reached out too sooner. I don't, I'm not privy to that information, but I know this. I, this is my last term in office, and until that last day, I will fight as hard as I can. I will ask those questions, and I will stand up and advocate for the people that I took the oath to do it for, and I am so sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
My name is Sarah Flower, and I work for Warren County CPS. I've only been in my job for just under a year. I'd like to say, just from my point of view, and what might be on other people's minds, that talk is cheap. You can say that you want to help, you can say that you're gonna talk about it, that you have these plans. That's over. It's time for action. And when I sit here and see some of our councilmen playing solitaire on their phones instead of paying attention to what's being said in the front of the room, it is so disgusting.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. You're gonna, you're gonna.
We'll see you later.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess. Yeah.
You want the full report?
I'm not going to give it.
Okay.
I'll give my chairman's report for the month. Last May 20th, attended board supervisors meeting. On the 23rd, 24th, attended committee meetings. The 25th, attended APA local government meeting in Saranac Lake and the AATV meeting in Tupper Lake. 31st, I went to ARPA committee meeting on June 2nd, attended personnel finance meeting and another board supervisors meeting. June 3rd, I attended a joint meeting of SUNY Adirondack with Washington County Personnel Finance Committees. On June 6th, I attended the summer business meeting of the AATV in Lake Placid. That was on the 5th and 6th. On June 7th, I attended a tourism staff meeting in the morning and the Legislative and Rules Committee meeting here at the county. And on the 14th, I attended the ARPA Advisory Committee meeting. Report of chairs. Supervisor Hogan, you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't chair a committee and I barely sit on any, so I don't have a report. But I would like to take this moment to, I know most of them have left, but I want to thank the employees who came out to speak tonight. Their message was powerful and it was very brave of them. Last year, the small and relatively poor town of Johnsburg committed to a base minimum wage that's $2 above New York State minimum. We also embarked on a plan to increase the happiness quotient of our employees. We make sure that they take their lunches. We make sure they take their vacations. We check in with them frequently. We talk about mental health in the office. All of these things are important. And if the small and relatively poor town of Johnsburg can do these things, so can the county. So I urge you to really keep to that timeline of within a week. And, and I think we'll all be following up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Dixon.
I don't have a committee report. I would like to, to discuss ARPA for a minute. We are meeting every two weeks. We are making some progress moving down the agenda. We have recently put out completed applications. It's going out Monday. Online Monday.
Yep.
So we are moving ahead and we're making some great progress. And we had a full agenda and a full contingency at our last meeting, so we're moving.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Schraub.
Yes, thank you. Legislative Rules and Government Operations did meet on May 24th. And we met with the Board of Elections Commissioners, Bill Van Ness and Beth McLaughlin. And they gave a very convincing argument as to why we need to go with Heart Inter-Civic Incorporated. There is a resolution for approving their desire to go with Heart Inter-Civic on Resolution 294 before you tonight. The, the finance over the five-year period is very similar to what we have now. And from what we were told, very convincingly, the product is the better product to go with going forward. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic Growth and Development met on the 24th of May. There's three resolutions in front of the board today, 282, 82, and 84. 282 is basically a support of Mayor Collins and Clint Spals. Working with Clint Spals, Credit Clint Spals Transit and CDT to try to work through a merger. Much more to come on that. Hopefully it will happen. It will be a big boost to our region to be able to get that connection between the Albany, Saratoga region and our region here. 283 and 284, that lease agreement, New York State Department of Labor for employment and training and approval for consolidated funding grant. And then also, Mr. Chairman, there is a floor resolution number one and two. I'm not sure when to bring that up, but that's basically looking to add staff in our planning department to help with all the grant applications.
We'll do that at resolutions.
Thank you. And that's the rest of my report. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have a committee any longer, but I do sit on a few. But I do want to reach out and thank all the employees that came. We have listened for quite a long time and I, you know, and it has been coming stronger and stronger. And there was some really, some heartfelt pain out there tonight, and, and I do feel it. And, you know, Rachel, our supervisor Seaver, has spoken up and spoke very well, so I held back on, on speaking in front of the group because I, I really couldn't add any more than that. But I did hear the week that something will start and I would like to be involved in something since I really have been stripped down quite a bit on, for what I used to do. So I, I hope that the, the chairman would help me be involved in, in moving forward with our employees. Thank you.
Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you. I do have a few items for this evening. One, I want to thank the chairman for the opportunity to present an award to Crime Victim Specialist Aaron Prowne last Friday evening. I'm hopeful that our Public Information Officer will share that with our community. She spent 32 years providing victim services and started here in Warren County as a CPS worker. I trust we probably didn't have exit interviews back then, but back then, things were very different in terms of where our employees were going. We've continued to bring up the issues of exit interviews. And tonight, we heard that many times, we have no idea what is being said to us. I do have a meeting. I'm hopeful our chairman hasn't confirmed it for tomorrow, but I did ask for a meeting with the county administrator and with our chairman. And what I would like to do is go through initiatives and ideas that were brought up last year and have not continued to be followed on. We may all disagree on multiple different things, but at the end of the day, we should all agree on serving our community and serving it to the best of our abilities. I'm disappointed to see initiatives that were so important to our employees and to our community members not being followed up on. For instance, we'll be having a meeting under the direction of Chairman Girasi on Monday to talk about our vulnerabilities, our vulnerabilities here as a county. That report, that report is a very important report given to us on a safety assessment. But for years, this board has talked about concerns about just even putting simple security measures, measures outdoors. This isn't going to be a one-meeting fix. This has to be a full board engagement. And I would urge you not to just have a meeting on Monday and move forward, but rather to gather all of the experiences and the historical data that brought us to this point. It does impact our employees and how safe they feel or unsafe they feel in this community. I also want to bring up too, that the CJ track tonight that we had about the internship. I'm happy to learn tonight that three people graduated from that. But that again, was an initiative that last year Tammy and many other staff members worked incredibly hard on with me so that we could support our high school seniors, our emphasis on education, not just in the trade, but also in credit bearing programs. I continue to ask that we do explore that and that we make that a priority out of our county administrator's office. But we continue to look at different ways that we can encourage people to stay in the field in county government and administrator more. I hope that's a commitment that you can make to us, that we're going to continue to do that. I'm not done. I'm just waiting for the commitment.
I'm sorry.
I'll bring it up tomorrow. I also wanted to state that here tonight, we had an evening meeting where we had, I don't even know how many people. But we have two meetings now a month. Why can't one meeting be in the evening? Why can't we provide our residents with a chance to come in the evening and talk with us? I heard people today saying they were in the parking lot changing their shirts so that they could come over and be part of this. We've asked for evening meetings for years. Why can't we do one evening meeting a month? And we can work out ways to compensate, to have flex time, so that we can do a better job at saying to our employees, we appreciate them. It is disappointing to see because of different initiatives and changes of leadership, that here we are today, for some of us brought to tears, hearing from people that we should be doing our utmost best to respect and to serve. So my, my last point this evening, over the weekend, over the last two weekends, I've heard from countless residents in my driveway talking to me about how upset they are that they can't even walk into our D and B and get a basic service. If they often have an appointment, if they can't, they can't even access what they're paying for as taxpayers. Now Pam Vogels responded to our administrator and our chairman for her follow-up. What we have in our inherent committee, and what I'd like to say to our community is, please contact our county clerk. She's an elected official. We all know that she will make those rules. I hope that just like our other elected officials, they will work with this board. But that is a basic essential service and we are losing money. We, but forget the money. We're not providing a basic service. And I sat here and all of you heard me ask about it last month, but I had to follow back up not once, but twice. I don't understand why we all aren't getting behind providing services. So I hope that someone gives me an exit interview. I plan on remaining in this seat for as long as possible, but I will not be running for another term. And I hope that any time that I have left, we all stand up and somehow unite because what we're doing is embarrassing and not treating the people that we should treat as family in a way that any of our parents would have been proud of. I appreciate the chance to talk with you tonight.
Thank you. Supervisor Bailey.
I'm also not a chairman of any committee, but I will make a comment. And I was very impressed by CSCE coming out in such a strong and powerful voice. Their stories were not only touching, but real and true. And tonight, we'll be, we'll be trying to help them and every other resident in this county with a tax cap, get gas tax cap. We're going to ask it to come off the floor. For any supervisor who thinks that this isn't real, I feel, I feel bad for them, that they don't want to help county residents. So we'll be discussing this a little later when we get to the resolution part. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel and Higher Education Committee met on June 2nd. And in your package are resolutions 298 through 303 that were generated from that committee meeting. There were six requests that came through that committee from that meeting that went on to the June 2nd board meeting that same day. A couple of the resolutions, 303 is, is an agreement with the teachers' union for the correction officers. And I believe they have ratified the agreement and it's before us now. Also was the time, the retirement time for elected and appointed officials are in there. There's a resolution for the clerk, clerk of our board to serve on the executive committee at the New York State Association of Clerks. And there's adjustments to the base salary of the public defender position. On, on June 3rd, there was a joint meeting with finance and with Washington County at the, at SUNY Adirondack about the 2020, 22, 23 budget. There was a resolution that's 304 is before you that, that came out of that meeting. It's a tentative budget for, for SUNY. It's $2,173,075 to Warren County, which is a 2% increase. There will be ongoing discussion to increase the sponsors' contribution rate, both for Washington and Warren County. And that's before us. That's resolution 304. And a lot of the personnel meeting on June 2nd dealt around the position of Director for Tourism. There, the committee decided to, to change the minimum qualifications and to re-advertise the position. So that generated another meeting on June 7th after the civil service, after Trish at Civil Service had, had put together some more minimum qualifications. Now there's three minimum qualifications. The less formal the education is, the more experienced is going to be required. And this has been put, put together and advertised and put out and is open until Jan, or July 1st. So let's see how many, see how many new applicants we get or the same ones or what happens. But I think the, the minimum qualifications covered pretty much anybody that would be interested in the position. On June 8th, the Joseph Warren Center, full committee met. We're pretty close to finalizing a site plan. The, I think the focus of the whole committee is on the existing house and turning that into a museum prior to the 250th anniversary of our country. And that's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you pull your mic down so we can hear?
Public work met on May 24th, representing your package by resolutions 295, 296, and 297. Results, so I think for yourself on the finance, mostly financial matters of their self-explanatory. These, I believe, are self-explanatory. 295 is authorized a supplement agreement with DOT relative to a grant for work on Creek Bridge in the town of Queensberry. 296 is an extra on work, consulting work. And 297 is money to be appropriate for property acquisition relative to a bridge project on Sagamore Road. At our meeting also, we had a presentation by Zero Waste Committee. Very interesting presentation. I think that report has been sent to all the supervisors that they produce. It's an interesting report. If you haven't had a chance to review it, I would recommend that you, you do review it. And I think that we're moving in a very positive direction in, in, in a world of solid waste. We have an employee devoted to that right now. We're talking about how to improve our specifications for our transfer stations so that we can take better advantage of changing markets, especially recyclable markets as they, as they develop. And so, and then the overall goal, of course, especially if it relates to green waste and composting, is to try to reduce our waste stream possibly by as much as 30 or 35%. And if we were able to achieve that, that would be a tremendous accomplishment for our, for our county and our municipalities. Because the cost of, especially the transport, solid waste is only going up. And so that concludes my report.
Okay. Supervisor Weller.
Thank you, Chairman Garrity. Finance committee met twice, June 2nd and June 3rd with personnel on June 3rd for the SUNY ADK budget. Before you tonight, our resolutions 274, 275, and then a list of them on page 5, 304 through 309. And there's, which includes a tentative operating budget for Adirondack Community College. It's still called here. And then if you look at 306, 307, 308, those are all real calls. If we could call them all at once, thank you. Also, I attended with Chairman Garrity, the AATV monthly meeting and, and the annual meeting. I'd like to say that the AATV puts together a legislative agenda that takes into consideration the needs of Adirondack communities and walks that down into Albany to advocate for our needs up here. It's a good organization. There was a lot behind it. Also today, I was up at the Common Ground Alliance meeting up at Gore Mountain. We had 180 some odd people attend there. It was from all over the Adirondacks, agencies, private individuals, elected officials, et cetera. And from, and we covered, and it was good to see Sheriff LaFara up there. He attended and participated in one of the programs about building vibrant communities along with policing. Jim Siplam of the EDC, LDC was there and talking about housing and technical solutions to our housing, I'll call it a crisis. And the, from that, we produced the blueprint for the Blue Line and that gets walked down to Albany as well to advocate for Adirondack communities and issues that are not solely our own, but it comes with our voice. So that's all I have.
Supervisor Diamond.
No reports.
Supervisor.
No report.
Supervisor Bremer.
I want to thank all of the employees who came tonight. It was very brave of them to come and it was
It was very brave of them to come and it was very meaningful and powerful. I'm really glad that they did that because a lot of times we are not hearing all of the issues. And I want to make sure that department heads are lifting all of those concerns to us. Last year, we, as Personnel Chair, I tried to keep my finger on the pulse. I'm not that positioned anymore. Last year, we did do a lot with making sure that our leaders had leadership training, management training that was helping, should help our um, department heads and higher level management with things like morale. And I really hope that we can continue with that. We also had that education program clearing the way for our people to get education and training. So it's really disheartening to hear that we we invest that money into people and um, they're feeling so abused by us. We're the leadership here, we should be taking care of our employees. And I really hope that we will do that. I'm looking at our Finance Chair, Personnel and Budget and and you Chairman, that we take care of this as soon as possible. Last time we were saying twenty-four, forty-eight hours and we're now a month away or weeks away. We cannot wait another week to reach out to these people and try to make something happen. I would like that, I'm going to continue asking for that to be dealt with in an emergency, urgent manner. I do care about our employees and I know many of us do here, so let's make sure we get that taken care of. I brought this up in numerous examples, I can, the cooks at Countryside, the person that we just hired uh, through the money that we got from the Children's Committee. Those salaries are way too low. We need to take care of it. The second thing I want to mention Supervisor Beatty already mentioned about, there was an individual talked about the gas to get to work from up county. I think it's important that we do what what we can in a small way from the county perspective to help people. And I will be bringing this um, motion for the gas tax cap off the floor this evening at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Rono.
Thank you, Chairman Garrity. The County Facilities Committee met on May 24th at ten fifty AM. As a result of that meeting, there are two resolutions tonight. Resolution number two seventy-six is amending the airport real property lease agreement with Skimmerhorn Aviation LLC for hangars number seven and eight at Floyd Bennett Memorial Airport. And this is to add an additional three years to uh, each of those for total term of forty-three years with the same terms and conditions as the original agreement. And I hope you support that. Two seventy-seven is uh, adopting an amended fee schedule for the Fire Prevention and Building Code Enforcement Department within Warren County. And what the committee uh, discussed, the fees currently uh, enforced, so to speak. And we wanted to upgrade, update them. We compared our fees with, I think it was Saratoga County, Queensberry, whatever. But uh, there's a new fee schedule attached to this on the back of the resolution that uh, I hope you can support, adopt that. And this would uh, repeal any, any prior um, fees, et cetera. So additionally, we discussed the uh, solar farm representative, kids of Nexamp. That's the solar farm at the airport, were there and uh, had a good presentation. An update on the taxiway LED project and runway nineteen obstruction mitigation update. Those are tuning along. The uh, there's a worker request program and a fleet car request program, those are running very well. We had an update on the Countryside Adult Home Project. And we're putting together, somebody's putting it together, an RFP for utility cost recovery, as we discussed at uh, prior meetings, I believe. We also had uh, a design updates, the front entrance here and uh, will be um, add more green space and re revise the parking. The updated plan will be presented at the next Tuesday's meeting. An update on the bait, asbestos abatement in the old jail building. And we're staff, the DPW is waiting for final cost of abatement selective demolition for that. An update on the work, convert former Warren County Detention Center, the Joseph Warren Center is Supervisor Thomas gave an update there. And discussions will continue regarding updates to this boardroom. And that's good, my supervisor Bruno, was it two seventy-six going to be pulled back for some issues with the lease, the length of the lease? Is that right?
That that was going to be put on hold and the conversation with the DPW.
I think you're, I think it right, but I didn't see anything that formally told me that it was going to be in it's included here. It supervisor. Go ahead.
So as you're all aware, at committee meeting, I brought a lease update because uh, Rich Harid had uh, come and asked to extend it for three more years because he has not had the opportunity to build his hangars as of yet. Material costs went up, uh, couldn't get people to do the work for him. I mean, basically, I think it came down to the pandemic that I'm eliminating from doing and I don't think he had somebody to fill the hangar. So he wanted to extend the lease for three years since he hasn't even built the facilities yet. I prematurely, I think, brought it to committee because it was done through a public hearing and we had to go through a secret process. So I had asked Supervisor Bruno that we pull this from the committee for tonight until we go through that process of doing a public hearing and the seeker uh, seeker review.
So does somebody want to make a motion or withdraw Supervisor Bruno? We have a second by Supervisor Dickerson, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
We withdraw two seventy-six, thank you.
I apologize, we hadn't discussed that and I
Thank you.
Forgot. Sorry.
Supervisor Dresko.
Thank you, Chairman. Human Services met on Monday, May twenty-third. Uh, from that meeting uh, came a uh, two resolutions uh, from the committee. Uh, resolution two ninety-two, which is basically authorizing the submission of a uh, grant application from the Countryside Adult Home to the New York State Department of Health. Two ninety-three uh, is a uh, book, is a uh, housekeeping, appointing and reappointing members to the Warren County Youth Board through the Department of Social Services. And if if I could um, respectfully um, add my support to a resolution coming out of Supervisor Thomas's Personnel, Admin and Higher Ed Committee, uh, resolution two ninety-eight. We heard a little bit about uh, that uh, in some of the comments today. It's a, it's a amending the table of organization and Warren County Salary and Compensation Plan for the two thousand twenty-two for decreed or delete positions within Department of Social Services. Earlier this evening, we we heard how it's not unusual for Department of Social Services to have uh, an individual from one department pitching in to address the needs of of the community in another department. It's a movable um, uh, operations over there. Uh, every day is a little bit different. Uh, you're you're basically, you're uh, a lot of crisis, a lot of uh, emergencies and and you've just got to get the work done. So I, again, this is one that I I add my support to because I, as I understand it, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. And I would ask people to give their careful consideration to uh, devoting that way. And then on Monday, uh, just coming Monday, the Human Services Committee will meet on or about nine forty.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health Services met on May the twenty-third. Out of that came resolutions two eighty-six uh, through two ninety-one. Two eighty-six and two eighty-seven are from uh, for the Office of the Aging that are just amending resolutions. Two eighty-eight and two eighty-nine, one is from Office of the Aging, which is authorizing extension of agreements. Two eighty-nine, Public Health, again, offering continuation of agreements. And two ninety and two ninety-one basically are the same thing, authorizing agreement with continuing relationships. I'd like to just bring one thing to supervisors' attention. I'm on the youth bureau, I represent the youth bureau and I see where we just made another appointment. But what I'm noticing is that the towns are not like sending the people that are their representatives. I've been on the last two or three Zoom calls of which I was like, basically the only town in the town that county that was represented. So I guess, why are we appointing these people to this youth bureau and if nobody, they don't seem to have an interest in sending their people to these meetings or doing the Zoom meetings? It bothers me, we've now joined, Warren County is now joined with Washington County and they're running the program for us. But it just seems like somehow other, we had kind of need to make our supervisors aware that if they have people from their town that are appointed to be on this committee, I would think they would at least try to make an effort to get to them. We only meet like three or four times a year. It's not even like we meet every month, but it's just, I'm a little disappointed when I just see, I, like I say, the last Zoom meeting, I was like the only town that was represented other than like the towns from Washington.
Yeah, I just saw the new appointments this uh, for tonight.
Right, and that's why I thought about it because I'm, you know, I'm a little frustrated when I look at that and think we have all these towns and make appointments and nobody goes to the meetings, nobody zooms in on the meetings.
Yeah, I'll rep it, I'll reach out to our representative.
Okay, thank you. And that's my
Thank you. Supervisor Dresky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee met on uh, Monday, May twenty-third. Four resolutions uh, before tonight for approval. One is two seventy-eight is from the signed council and two seventy-nine through two eighty-one is for the chair. So I look for your support on those. Um, our committee will meet again on Tuesday, it's a day later than typical. There's some conflict, so we'll meet Tuesday morning at nine. You heard Supervisor Seabrook reference, one of the issues that will be discussed is the safety and security of this Warren County campus. Uh, so we encourage all of you, I'm I'm not certain, I don't think we'll come to uh, any final conclusion on what the the issues will be uh, in terms of a resolution. But we do need everyone's opinions. So uh, Tuesday at nine is the committee meeting. We appreciate your interest and participation. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Report of County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start by acknowledging several significant milestones of leaders in this county. As was already mentioned, Nancy Ross uh, on the eighth celebrated her thirtieth year. Can't say enough about what a great partner Nancy was when she uh, was was active in the C S E A leadership. She was great to deal with. Uh, Tim Benway uh, from DPW, who you all know from Parks and Rec, also thirty years. Uh, clocking in at twenty years, we have uh, Corinne Kelly, the probation and Brandy French at Countryside Adult Home. And one of our great department heads who I'm so pleased is a department head now and part of our county leadership. And that's Jeff Woodell, the Director of Weights and Measures. But last but not least, I skipped her uh, because there are not enough platitudes in uh, the English language to express how highly I think of her, how much she does to support me, to support the Board of Supervisors, to support the county as a whole. And that's Tammy DiLorenzo with twenty-five years. So congratulations, Tammy. Congratulations, everybody, we appreciate your service. Uh, I'll do an abbreviated version of my uh, activities and I'll focus on uh, the topic of the night, which is the labor contract. Uh, on uh, June 6th, I received a letter from C S E A from Diane Selchek, who is their Labor Relations Specialist. She's their attorney, who we deal with in all of these matters that she's Larry Paltrowitz's counterpart in the negotiations. Um, this is the first letter I've received this year. I'll read it to you, it's brief. C S E A has been approached by its membership regarding salaries in Warren County. Our members are constantly seeing their coworkers leaving the county to pursue higher paying jobs with less stress. We have also seen this being a recruitment issue as surrounding public and private employers are exceeding the starting salaries currently in place at the county. C S E A member Dennis Daly expressed his frustration to the County Board of Supervisors at their meeting on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-two regarding the current salary discrepancies between Warren County and other public employers. C S E A shares this frustration and is still interested in meeting to discuss increasing the wages to the employees in our bargaining unit. Please feel free to contact me at the number listed above or email me to discuss these matters. That was June 6th, uh, I responded on June 7th uh, by email to Diane. I copied our negotiation team, Jackie, Larry, uh, and Kevin Frank. Diane, hope you're well, I received your letter today and forwarded a copy to those copied on this email. As you know, we agreed in January to accelerate the traditional pace of reallocation. For our part, the county is still very serious about reallocation. And we're finishing up our review of positions for inclusion in that process. In terms of properly understanding your request, are you seeking to continue with reallocation or to reopen the collective bargaining agreement? Please let out those on this email, no, so that we can properly consider and act on your request. Uh, that was June 7th. I have not received a response to that email. Um, I did talk to Mr. Briggs, I found his email, he didn't have any cards on him, but I found his email address online. Uh, and I told Mr. Briggs that uh, I'll reengage on this and uh, include him in the correspondence and we'll get that going tomorrow morning. Um, I've been in touch with Larry Paltrowitz as we sit here during this meeting, so um, it'll, it it won't take a week, but we're on it already. That concludes my report.
Okay. County Attorney.
Thank you, I wanted to thank the department heads who, department heads who have had requests for a legal review or a legal opinion. We're trying to work through a exceedingly large number of such requests right now. So thank you for your patience, uh, sometimes it takes significant time to review uh, some of the issues that are being presented to us. As far as a report, the only real update uh, is the decision in order that was issued in the Forest Enterprise Management, Inc. lawsuit. And it's my hope that that'll be going through the committee process this coming round of uh, meetings. Subject to any questions or matters which the, any member of the committee would like to discuss in executive session, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Great, communications.
We have a letter from Assemblyman Matthew J. Simpson in response to her request for restoration of state funding to cover the cost of court-mandated mental health competency services and an invitation from the Girl Scouts of Northeastern New York to visit Hidden Lake Camp on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Both of those items were emailed to you earlier this week.
Okay. Reading of resolutions.
Resolution numbers two seventy-four through three oh nine were distributed to the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on Friday, June tenth along with proclamation twenty-eight and two four resolutions. Proclamation twenty-nine was distributed to the board on June fourteenth. These distributions met the deadline specified in the rules of the board. The two proclamations are number twenty-eight, which is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and uh, number twenty-one, nine, which is the proclamation of appreciation for Michael Biddle, which you approved earlier in this meeting. There are two floor resolutions before you, um, and they're in your folders. So for resolution number one is waiving the rules and for resolution number two is the actual resolution itself. And that's amending the table of organization and Warren County Salary and Compensation Plan for two thousand twenty-two to create a position in the Planning and Community Development Department. So a motion is needed to bring each of those to the floor.
So I have motion by Supervisor Wild and a second by Supervisor Stroud to bring floor resolution number one to the board. All those in favor? Close, carry.
For resolution number one is now resolution number three ten.
I need a motion for resolution number two. Motion by Supervisor Leggett, second by Supervisor Stroud. Any discussion on floor resolution number two? Supervisor. Uh, Wild or Supervisor Bremer first, although alphabetically.
I just wondered why this didn't come through committee, I thought it um, had after it got denied or we didn't have committee meetings between this and the last time it got denied, is that what's happening?
Supervisor. Well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in response to that, uh, we heard earlier uh, about uh, the wage disparity that we have uh, from our union employees. It doesn't just affect our union employees, it affects our salary employees also. And this resolution uh, was brought before uh, the board uh, at our last meeting. And I apologize for not being so adamant about trying to describe why it's important. But this is the planning department, we have had a position open, we did advertise, it was open for months, we did not It was open for months. We did not get one single application. It was primarily because of the fact that the salary range was just way low for anyone to even consider coming to this uh location to work in a planning job. So what we did is we we worked the requirements, we worked the uh basic qualifications. And we came out with another way to increase the salary and give us some more flexibility. The reason why it's important, I think everyone understands what the value of our planning department does. They bring millions of dollars of grant money to the county and to some of the towns specifically every year. They are now overburdened with ARPA. We have uh an agreement to move forward with a um comprehensive plan for the county. They're putting in consolidated funding grant applications. And they're also administering a number of grants that are exa- already existing. This organization needs to help. And it gets to, it's going to get to the point where they're going to have to stop supporting some of the activities that we're doing. And that's why I thought I would bring this to the board again and respectfully ask your support because it helps us all. It's a revenue generator. It helps our towns. It helps the county. And it's not um something that will cost the county for doing something like this because they do bring in much more than what they cost us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further, further discussion. Supervisor Seaver.
I thought when positions or resolutions fail, but they had to go back through committee and have that dialogue so that we can answer the questions uh that were before us that may have caused it not to pass. And mine isn't about the value of our planning department or how hard they work or how much help they need. My question, and it still has not been answered to me from the last meeting when I voted against it, was why do we have two positions that we're going out for, but we're only going to hire for one? And I just think to our residents and our constituents that it's really difficult for them to think that they're applying for something. And in essence, we're not going to hire for that one, but we might for another depending on who applies. I just don't get that mindset and how come we aren't deleting the one that we aren't going to hire for? But so, I mean, I can, I'll abstain from both because I don't understand. And I keep asking questions and like usual, it went off.
The the answer to the question is that's what the department head asked for.
But why?
The department head wants the ability to leave the lower paying position open in case he does get an applicant for it.
May I?
Sure.
So so why are we, so are we hiring? So we're going out for two positions, but why aren't we going to hire for one? But we're going to keep the other one in the budget just in case. I I I just don't, I'm, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And if we had gone back to committee and we had talked about this, these answers could have been discussed.
That we did discuss this in committee, that the position of only one of the two positions would be filled. That the budget, the budgeted salary for the lower paying position would more than pay for the higher higher paid position if we do hire. So either way, we're going to have budgetary savings and the position that we don't hire will get rid of.
But my question, my question, when we did talk about that and when we continue to talk about it is how are we communicating that to the people that are applying? Is it not in? Is it not um incredibly confusing to the community as they're going through that? And we already hear from people that they think we have people lined up for positions. We aren't doing it fairly. We're like, we're already under fire. And we should be under fire. This seems really confusing.
Nobody's applied to the position that's posted and the second position is not posted because it's not created.
Oh, are we going to delete the one no one applied to?
No, when we fill one of the positions, we're going to delete the other one. That's the way it was presented at committee.
Why can't we delete the one that is up and no one's applied for now when we go out for this?
Because the department had asked for it to be done a different way and the committee backed them on it.
Okay, well, since we are a full board and our committees are awfully small and sometimes not fully representative of all of our communities, why can't we have this discussion here now?
You can.
I was asking our chairman.
What's that?
Mine, I just don't know.
Supervisor Wild, did you have something to add?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I I recognize the concern that there might be two different job openings. We did agree to only hire one, fill one. Uh, the point is, is that like our county administrator said, there were no applicants. We couldn't attract anyone to even write a letter. So we need this position filled. And I took the initiative to ask this before the front of the board today because it's important to each and every one in this board because it's important to each and every constituent. If we had applications for the other position, they would have been considered. We had none. So we can wait for another month, which would delay even longer before we might be able to get someone qualified to help in the planning department where they desperately need the help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions around the table of organization in the planning department. I looked at two thousand twenty one. At that point, we had an assistant county planner. Uh, we had an associate planner, construction cost coordinator. We had a county planner. We had a junior plan. An office specialist, office specialist, part time, and there was overtime. Budget was about two hundred and ninety seven thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars. My question is, we're proposing today to hire an assistant county planner number two. We already have an assistant county planner. We have a construction coordinator similar to twenty one. We have a county planner similar to twenty one. It was requested by the department head to put the junior planner in the table of organization and fund it. But we chose not to do that. We we zeroed out that particular position. Now we have an office specialist similar to last year, uh office specialist. Then we have an overtime position which the department had requested five hundred dollars and we awarded him two thousand dollars for his budget. This senior planner's position. Is this the position that we haven't been able to fill? It's in the table of organization. There's a senior position. There's a senior planner in the table of organization. If you look at the budget and its salary is set at fifty thousand three hundred and eighty four dollars. Is this the position that we've had trouble filling this year?
I believe it is. Is this the position he couldn't?
I believe it is. That's why the the salary for the new position is sixty three.
So also stated here that the reason why we haven't filled this position is because of the salary attached to the position. However, I find that uh unusual because we had no feedback from anybody saying the salary was too low. How do we know that? There's nobody applied for the job. We've never got any response for the job. So is it our intentions now to create this assistant county planner number two? It's sixty eight thousand dollars a year for sixty three thousand.
Sixty three.
And are we going to eliminate the fifty thousand dollars from the senior planner's position? Because if you look at it, if that stays, if that money stays in the budget, we're looking at uh an increase of about ninety five thousand dollars over last year's budget uh in the planning department.
Can you? I, yeah, sure. I'll go into the history. So if you dial back to the twenty twenty budget, uh, the uh, the the board authorized the assistant planner number two position and authorized it at zero salary. Uh, that position was not pursued in early twenty twenty because of COVID. And we didn't know what the financial implications were going to be yet for COVID. So in the twenty twenty one budget, as part of a budget request that came from the department, that title, the assistant planner number two that we're talking about tonight, was removed and replaced with a senior planner. And that the senior planner position is the one that they've been trying to fill. Uh, that's the one that Wayne hasn't gotten any bites on. So the the what he would like to do is keep that one posted. Also recreate that assistant planner two that the board gave him in twenty twenty. Uh, and whichever one of those he gets a quality person and fills it, delete the other one. Bring it, take it out of the budget.
Taking to find the money's out of the budget. The position or the financing or the funding.
If, yeah, what whatever, hopefully we hire somebody this year and then in next year's budget, that position and the funding forever gone.
If you hire an assistant county planner number two, it's sixty three thousand dollars. And it's my understanding that that money's coming from contingency.
No.
It's being moved out of the salaries here?
Yes.
So if we do find an assistant county planner for sixty three thousand dollars, we're going to move monies from the senior planner of fifty thousand and then we're going to be on the hook for the difference.
No, no.
So it's a half a year.
But if if the salary is sixty three thousand and he's able to fill it, we're already halfway through the year. So if he's, he'll only need to spend thirty thousand of that. That thirty thousand will come out of the fifty thousand that's appropriated for the senior planner. And then the twenty we don't work reverts to fund balance at the end of the year, the twenty we don't need rather as of work.
Supervisor Wild.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just respond to the question about whether or not the uh salary was appropriate. Two things that I've discovered. One was that the planning uh director told me so direct directly that he can't get people. And I went and I I looked at the job boards for a planning department and find out what was there. It was significantly higher than the number we have it moved to now at sixty three thousand. We're way under. And even some of the places in the state where Wayne was reaching out to his peers to find out what was happening with filling these positions, they were having trouble finding someone. So I know we were we're trying our best to be fiscally responsible. We should be. This position brings in much more than what they cost us. And the grants also have administrative portions in them that covers part of their salaries. So I I just don't get it. I don't get it. If we're looking and trying to be fiscally sound, these bring in revenue much more. So I'm mute in my mind. It's like an all star on my basketball team or football team. They're the ones that help bring in more people to the stadium, more people watching TV. They're the ones that help create the revenue stream so everybody else can get paid. That's what the planning department is. Mr. Chairman, I don't know what else I can say.
Discussion on any other supervisor Drossi.
Just, I want to voice support for Supervisor Supervisor Wild in this issue. Coricón, like many rural towns, we don't have a planning office. If it wasn't for the county planning office and in particular the director and Ethan Gaddy, who has done so much for us and is currently uh applying for grants for us, it would not happen. Uh, I can't uh overstate enough how important that county office, and I and I've said this before um in in these body meetings, how valuable the county offices are, especially to communities like the town of Coricón, who simply doesn't have the vast staff talent um that the county has. So I completely support uh this effort.
Supervisor Seaver, and we have like four more supervisors wish to speak on this.
I, I'll just be brief. And I, this is in no way saying that I don't support the planning department or the grants that they bring in or how important they are. They are. This is about process and procedures. Years ago, this board said, we're going to delete unfunded positions that remain zero in the budget. We said we wouldn't duplicate these things. We'd get better with the accounting behind it. We'd follow our processes to create positions. That's all. Let's just do the process. But this one's really confusing. To your point, though, about how great they've been to the town of Coricón and some other ones, that's that's wonderful. But the proposed consolidated funding application that we have before us is a town of Coricón app, a town of Chester, a climate smart committee, a River Park front improvement, and a First Wilderness Action Plan. I just, you know, in that being Queensberry representative and wanting to advocate for my community as well, I would ask that we also look at some things that will expand and bring growth into additional areas. In Queensberry, Glens Falls isn't on that list either. I understand we all benefit from a healthy county. But as long as we're a board of supervisors, and I hope someday a board of legislators, we are here together trying to figure out how to benefit in the entire county. And I, I think part of that is a fair equitable process for hiring people and then also recognizing that we need full representation. So with all due respect, those are my concerns on this. It's not for the lack of support.
Well, let's wish Supervisor Shroud.
Yes, thank you. I mean, the objective here is to get a senior planner into our planning department. So after four or more years of college, perhaps some experience, some grant writing experience, you think you're going to get somebody for less than sixty three? Good luck. I think we'd be lucky to get something, somebody for sixty three. So I will support this. I also add that I don't think sixty three is probably enough. However, I'm going to support going forward because we have an immediate need that needs to be addressed, not delayed any longer. We need to address it tonight. Thank you.
Supervisor.
Yes, on that note, I I did try to work on this two years ago, if you recall, adding a position to the planning department. I think they need the support. I think they're valuable. I also want to say that I want more support for Glens Falls. We have a very minimal planning department. And it would have been great. We asked for support last year and we were told we had to pay for it. I mean, really, you know, give us a hand. We don't have any applications in the C F A program. And that's great for Coricón. I don't begrudge you at all. North Creek, great. I'm happy. We need that. But if the planning department is going to be there for the whole county, let's make sure that we're covering Glens Falls and Queensberry too.
Sure. Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I understand the planning department and uh and I was here for the meetings and I I support this uh resolution. Um, I understand the importance and the money that it brings in and and Supervisor Wild is is correct in saying that. It is confusing. I understand that. I would like to to, you know, feel that we will fall through and if we hire uh a, the cheaper um planner, if we're able to find one, that we delete the the upper one or not. But I don't have a problem on deleting the cheap one and hoping that we get it qualified. But after what we saw tonight with our other employees, to leave money on the table and to go out and and try to hire someone, you know, important that brings in money. But as we saw the team that we have, and as I stated, you know, for quite a few years now, there's no I in team in working together. I just feel that, you know, it the we had a process and we should stick with it, but usually when we do one thing, we remove another. And and leaving it on there, I I I think just opens a can of worm and and it it could come back and bite us. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you. Um, I I understand where the supervisor from Glens Falls is coming from and and her concerns, but one of the things that was not enumerated as as something that the planning department's working on is the housing study. And that's going to be important to all of us from one end of the county to the other. If we don't cast a wide net, we've learned, we got no applicants for after posting for months. If we don't cast a wide net, um, we'll get nobody. And if we don't beef up this department, they're certainly not going to be able to help every one of us in the way that we would like them to. So please support this and let's move on. Um, to the process, I don't disagree with the supervisor from Queensberry. We have processes. We need to follow them. Um, I'm going to support this tonight, but I'm going to ask us to to please, let's let's try to keep it inside the lanes as we go forward. Alternatively, if we don't want to do that, then let's not be so harsh on one another when we do go outside the lanes and try to move things forward. You know, in a manner. It's one or the other. You can't have it both ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on other resolutions. Supervisor Leggett.
Oh, yeah, we do. Need to vote on that.
Resolution number two to the floor.
What are we doing now?
You still have a motion on the floor to bring floor resolution.
We have a motion on the floor to bring floor resolution number two to vote. To the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed to bring it to the floor?
Opposed.
One Supervisor Diamond, Supervisor Beatty. Resolution passes. Resolution passes.
Well, it's brought to the floor. Floor resolution number two is now floor resolution, I'm sorry, resolution three eleven. It is subject to a roll call vote, and it does require a two-thirds majority.
Okay. Okay, now, any discussion, any other resolutions?
Yeah, then, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two resolutions, just wanted to mention, I will echo the comments of Supervisor Driscoll on resolution number two ninety-eight for support of that. That does require two-thirds vote. This is a very important position in that department that does serve the community and foster care needs. And as we heard tonight from our valued employees of the dedication that they give to the families and how important they are to our community members, that's, this is one of them, and it'll go a long way in supporting our community. The other one is on resolution number two ninety-three. The terms here for 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're ratifying who was?
Yes, my understanding is the paperwork was messed up in the process. The DSS goes through with the state, and they have to memorialize who the appointments were. Yes, so that's why you see that end date, and they will be either this coming month or the following month, bringing the 2022.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion on other resolutions. Supervisor Beatty. Thank you. Could I get a roll call on three oh four, please? Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, just to go back to two ninety-three, if this is just memorializing 2021, that's fine. But going forward to 2022, just for information, Jesse Epstein will no longer be our youth director.
And Mindy Conway will not be for Chester either.
We are searching for a youth director.
Any other discussion on resolutions? Supervisor Bremer.
I would like to bring a floor resolution. Is this the appropriate time?
Right now, sure. Go ahead.
I'd like to bring a floor resolution for the gas tax cap for Warren County, starting in September, and that will go through the end of that quarter.
Okay, so you want a motion to waive the rules?
Yes, I would like a motion to waive the rules.
Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Beatty to waive the rules. Let's do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, please state your resolution for the record.
You should have a copy of it. If you don't, let me know, I still have a couple. Did you get one, Supervisor Drossy? You did.
Peter, can you hand one down?
I'll just go ahead and read it. This is, was assisted by county administrator to make sure the wording was correct for Department of Finance. It's electing a cents per gallon rate of sales and compensating use taxes on motor fuel and diesel motor fuel in lieu of the percentage rate of such taxes pursuant to the authority of Article twenty-nine of the tax law of the state of New York. Being enacted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Warren, as follows, resolution is amended by adding a new section four B to read cents per gallon of sales and compensating use taxes on motor fuel and diesel fuel. Do you want me to read this whole thing?
I think, does everybody have it, or do you want it read?
We got it, we got it. We all have it.
Yeah, I have it, okay.
Okay, so I would like your support on this. My understanding how it works is that on a gallon of gas, on a purchase of gas, if it costs five dollars, we will only collect gas on the first two dollars of that cost of that gallon. So we're still collecting sales tax on the gas. But this would provide some relief for our residents, our consumers in the county, so that we are not collecting the full tax that we otherwise do normally. So I want to provide a little relief. I know that there's more that could be done, but this is more that could be done in the nation, in the country, in the world, maybe as far as gas taxes. But what we control here is our county sales tax. And I think that we should provide a little bit of relief to the consumers within our county and make it available to them to have a little bit more money in their own pockets. Now, I know our treasurer will not really be happy about this, maybe, because it's taking some money away from the county coffers. We are in a financially stable place, is my understanding. And I think we can survive for a few months without this extra sales tax on the fuel. And I'll make a motion to bring that to the floor.
Can I get just some clarification on it?
I'll try my best, Chairman.
Okay. So, and we'll take a fill-up. A fill-up, anything over two dollars, you'll say six cents, is that correct, three?
Well, it depends on the price of the gallon of gas.
So is, if it's, okay, if it's five dollars, it's thirty cents?
Well, if I may, Chairman, thank you. It depends, there's a formulation from the state of New York, okay? So it's a lot more complicated than that, but it's basically going to equate basically to three cents per dollar. So if it's five dollars for a gallon, it'd be nine cents savings. That's how Saratoga computed it also on all the other counties. So, so the savings to the residents, that's money we don't collect.
Right.
That's, the savings to the residents would be approximately nine cents for a five-dollar gallon of gas. And you throw in the sixteen cents that the state is doing, and that's twenty-five cents a gallon. Now, is that going to be the end of the world? To some, it will. You heard tonight, I had two employees say that they can't pay for the cost of the gas to come to work here. I gave the example last week, or two weeks ago, of the lady who cuts my hair. She lost a customer because she couldn't afford to drive from South Glens Falls to the northern part of Queensberry. So, does that make a lot? It could, it will. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, we have sixty-three thousand vehicles in Warren County. This isn't a rich thing. This is a poor thing, it's a medium of the road thing, and it's a more well-off thing. But it's for everybody, and I think that's very important. So there'd be basically, and again, there's a state calculation that's put into place, but it'd be basically nine cents if the price of the gallon of gas was five bucks. Now, I'd like to also state this, that I have reached out to the largest gas distributor in Warren County. Everybody knows who they are, Stewart's. They have more gas stations and fuels depots than anyone else in the county. I reached out to the president of Stewart's, Gary Day. He gave me, he had his director of fuel sales personally call me up and talk to me. And I said, Mr. Suprenaut, his name is Patrick Suprenaut. He says, you can quote me all you want to. He said, I said, I've got a question. How will the residents know that you're passing along the savings if we don't get that nine cents on a five-dollar gallon? He says, let me tell you something, Mr. Beatty. We are a huge corporate partner to residents in Warren County and every other county. We would never, ever not pass along those savings. In fact, he said, he says, if my cost of gas goes down, we'll pass, obviously it would, there'd be nine cents less than we collect, then he'll pass that along. He says that my competitors would do the same thing unless they want them, all their people, all their, all the customers going to my Stewart's and then going in and buying bread or whatever else they buy. So he says, you can quote me. But he said, we would definitely be great corporate partners and pass along those savings.
Just, Mr. Beatty, as I told you yesterday, I was in South Glens Falls in the morning, and the price of a gallon of gas at the Stewart's store on Saratoga Avenue was, I almost said two ninety-four, four ninety-four. I went up the hill to Glen Street, the price, no, it was four ninety-five in South Glens Falls. It was four ninety-nine, so it was four cents difference on the sign. So it's hard for me to comprehend where this is all going. I guess it's behind the scenes.
Well, it's behind the scenes, but more importantly is, you're, it's a very complex issue, right? We've got thousands, well, hundreds of fuel stations, right? You can, you can take the word of our biggest corporate partner in the county that they'll do the right thing, or you don't have to. Now, personally, I think he'd probably even be willing to come and reassure you if you had that doubt. But the point is, these prices change daily.
Right.
The national average right now is five oh one. New York State has always, always been higher than the national average. Why? Because we charge more gas tax than all the other states. And the fact that they have to ship the fuel from Jersey and so forth from their refineries. There's a lot of other variables. But the bottom line is, we in New York State always pay more than the national average. We are not paying the national average right now. Why? Because the state of New York took, has been gracious enough to stop sixteen cents per gallon. So you said you saw five ninety-nine or whatever. The Stewart's all around that I've seen are four ninety-nine in Warren County. Those are all below the national gas average. So I think, I think that's reflected that these corporate citizens are doing the right thing and passing along the savings, okay? Now, the price of gas could go up, a gallon of gas, to these companies to six dollars. Well, they're still going to be going up. Obviously, Stewart's can't absorb that, but they will still reflect the savings. So the national could be six oh one, but Stewart's would be still below the national average because of the New York State sixteen cents. And hopefully, this county will approve of the nine cents, which, again, that's a variable. That's a number that can be a variable. If it goes to six cents, it could be closer to twelve cents a gallon. If it goes down to three dollars a gallon, it'll only be three cents. Okay, does that help?
Yeah. Supervisor Bremer, you made a motion to bring it up from the floor. And we have our.
That passed, I thought, the motion.
We have a motion to get this on the agenda for a vote. We have a second. Supervisor Brown? All those in favor to bring this floor resolution up for a vote?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One, two, three, four, five. You want to do, you want to do a roll call? We better do a roll call. Because we've had people leave.
You have discussion at all?
Discussion, no, we're going to do a vote.
So we wanted, I'm ready.
You have to, you have to, you have to do two resolutions.
Okay, this is the motion to bring the gas tax resolution to the floor. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Sir Dickinson is now absent. Mr. Straugh?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Conover? Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'm going to vote yes to bring it to the floor. I'm probably going to vote against it for some reasons when we get to discussion.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
That passes with a vote of six hundred and seventeen in favor. So that's, the waiving the rules is resolution three twelve, and the gas tax resolution will be number three thirteen.
Okay, now we'll have discussion on three thirteen. Supervisor Wild was first, and then Supervisor Schra, and then we'll go around. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I absolutely agree that it would be great to help our residents financially through this. I have a number of concerns, and I always think that there's probably even more I don't understand. And I've asked about the consequences, and I still don't understand the consequences associated with this. Having Stewart's say that they would definitely pass this alarm is, you know, it makes you feel good. But it truly is a free market economy. These are, there are many private businesses. Now, are we going to save nine cents, are we going to save seven cents, depending on where you are in the county? I don't know. I don't know. So how are you going to enforce this if there is a question about whether they're really giving you that sales tax back? I'm concerned about that. Who gets it? Secondly, we heard today from employees of the county that we have a significant gap in the wages. We need to make that up because there's two things that I think of most for us as being supervisors, to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, and to make sure that we maintain and provide the necessary services that this county needs to provide. Now, we won't be able to do that unless we address the financial issue of the underpaying of our staff. We can never be successful without those staff. So we really need money to help cover that. It's either going to come out of our taxpayers' pockets one way or another. And now, another thing to consider also is, we don't know what's going to happen in September or October. We could hit a recession. It could happen quickly, and it could change the dynamics of this. So there's no rush for us to make this into effect today. We can do this in July, we can do it in August, if I'm not mistaken.
You are.
Still get this through to the September time. And I, maybe I'll ask our administrator that, once I'm done, to comment on when the last date is. But we can bring this back to the committee, we can talk with the treasurer, we can have serious discussions about the pros and cons of doing this. It's feel-good. Hopefully, it makes it work, but hopefully, it doesn't work against us at the same time. That's why I'm saying that we should not be passing this now. We do have time, and we should be prudent in terms of our deliberation to make sure that we're making the right decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
Allow, if you would, the county administrator to talk about the due date for us to be able to have a resolution that we can get to the state.
Typically, it's a ninety-day lead time to the start, but I did talk to the Tax and Finance Department, the Council's office, and they said that they would grant a waiver changing that ninety days down to thirty days. So for a September first start, that means August first, we would have to pass it by then and let the Tax and Finance Department know by then. So really, you've got to think of your deadline as being the July meeting.
So we have a month to figure this out.
Supervisor Schra.
Yes, thank you. We have eight exits in Warren County. Interstate going to Warren County. Tourism is a primary industry in Warren County. And what does that mean? It means that a lot of the people who are going to be paying the gas tax don't live in Warren County. They don't pay Warren County taxes. And it will be the Warren County taxpayers that lose in this deal. Not only that, but the extra revenue that we might receive by keeping the tax as it is should go to our employees. I agreed with our employees a hundred percent. We have to do something about it. So you don't want to take money out of the coffers. You need to put money into the coffers because that's what it's going to take to pay this. So I am opposed to this tax diminishment. Okay, thank you.
Over here, Supervisor McDevitt.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this proposal for, and if our employees had not showed up this evening, I would have probably voted for the proposal. They identified the fact that they've got some serious issues. We have to address those issues. This plan will cost Warren County approximately a million dollars in terms of revenue that we will lose September through December. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to take that million dollars and take care of the problems identified here this evening? Okay, that it would give us more flexibility, more desire to treat our county employees in a responsible way. So it's going to cost a million dollars from September through December. That's pretty expensive, in my opinion. So I prefer to take that million dollars and give it back to our CSEA employees.
Okay, Supervisor Seaver, you had your hand up. Supervisor Seaver?
Oh, I'm happy to defer to supervisor, I like it.
I did have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I know Supervisor Seaver, I saw your hand. I'm sorry, Craig.
Thank you. As finance chair, we brought this up before the finance committee as a discussion item. There was no desire of the finance committee back in the last quarter to move this forward. This is all with great intent. It is for the taxpayers of the. It is for the taxpayers of the Yeah, you know what? I'm gonna yield for a minute and have it be over to supervisor Seber until Mr. Beatty can compose himself.
Thank you. Okay, supervisor Seber?
Thank you. Um I find it ironic that here tonight we're saying, well, we'll find a million dollars to give to our employees by just not voting on helping them at the gas tanks. And you know, we've brought this up over ninety days ago at ARPA. And at ARPA, it got shot it got shot down by our own administration, not even by our elected. And when we asked for more information so that we could meet a deadline, so that we could discuss it, we weren't even given the information to discuss it in time. We found out too late. And so unlike my fellow colleague from Queensberry, I've heard from a lot of Queensberry residents that have been reaching out telling me that they are upset that, excuse me, that they are upset that in fact, we aren't doing anything about this. It may not mean a lot at the gas tanks or few pennies. We we have people in our community, not just our employees, that are well below a poverty line. With people that I heard people say, well, put it towards lowering the property tax. Well, great, let's do that too, but let's remember that we have children that are now driving sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year olds. We have people that rent homes. There there are so many different ways that we can help people in our community and I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it here in front of you saying that I'm getting feedback and text and messages saying, how come we're one of the few counties that missed the deadline? And I tell them that we failed administratively to have this before our board to talk about. After that, we went to finance and I heard finance talk about that they didn't want it. But it was a few member supervisors and I don't have adequate representation from Queensberry on the finance committee. So I'm here before you today to say, I hope that you're gonna think about this. And if the issue is money, why don't we talk about the ARPA fund? Because that can help people that are disproportionately placed. It can be put towards a level loss to make up what supervisor McDevitt's talking about. But let's think about the fact that the Bank of America five days ago said we are in a technical recession. Is it really? Is is this really what we're gonna do? We're gonna fight this resolution to try to help people that are are barely making it? I I don't know. Those are I'm gonna support this, but um thank you supervisor Leggett for sending it back over to me.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
You wanna finish?
Yeah, may I may I finish here? We have a responsibility to our taxpayers. A lot of this comes back onto our tax rate at our town and our county. And people will see more. The math is fuzzy on all this. Five dollars a gallon is put out there. That is not the wholesale cost. I talked to two fuel operators within our town and the right now, Stewarts is the highest at five oh five a gallon. Buckman's Fuel is four ninety five a gallon, independent, family operated. And our other, the Chester Mini Mar is um about four ninety five as as well. So it's a lot less than what Stewarts is already giving. I don't know why they are charging five oh five in our town when the others aren't, but that's beside the point. The point is, is that the tax, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, is on the wholesale price, not on the pump price. That the price at the pump includes all of the taxes. One of the vendors in our town is, I asked him saying, what did you see when the sixteen cents a gallon was instituted? There was a dime drop uh at the pump and then the next day wholesale prices after that went up twenty five cents. And by the end of the week, they went up another twenty five cents. We live in a free market and what the market will bear is what determines what is being paid at the pump. So even though our vendors will do the best to pass on any savings, they are still obligated to pay what the cost of this fuel is coming to them. So when you say this is gonna be nine cents um a gallon, if you're looking at five dollars, you know, you take off nine cents, it's gonna be down to four dollars and ninety one cents. That is not the case um at at all. The other thing that comes into mind is about personal responsibility for for our costs. And as I'm driving down the highway, it's a forty six mile round trip for me to come down here and back up. And calculating things out with just rough averages is that if I drive moderately, I can increase my gas mileage by two miles. Now, instead of twenty miles a gallon, I can get twenty two miles a gallon. That comes out to on a round trip sixty cents, sixty cents per gallon is where I'm getting you know back on that by by taking my own personal responsibility and driving responsibly. Meanwhile, I'm on the highway and I'm being passed by people doing seventy five or so. So I'm thinking, are they really concerned about their fuel prices? And um or So this whole proposal, as it's being put in front of it, is based on bad math. And as we look at what our obligations are, we just borrowed, we borrowed seven point nine million dollars to be able to take care of deferred capital expenses. We're putting it out there and we need to pay that back. And that's one million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we do not have a funding source for. We do not have a funding source for it. Where's that gonna come from? It's gonna come from property taxes more than likely. So can we defer that by taking on an extra million dollars and being able to put that towards debt service or putting it towards employee benefits? I agree with supervisor McDevitt. I hadn't even thought about the cost to this county to be able to bring our wages up on par. That is going to be in the millions of dollars. And where is that millions of dollars going to come from? We have several sources of revenue where it comes from. One of the main sources is sales tax. The other is property tax. Given that, I'm gonna speak for the property tax owners in in this county and say not to support this resolution.
Supervisor Ray?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll try to be brief. I know it's ironic that a Democrat is asking for reduction in taxes. I think that we can do both. I think that we can reduce the taxes on the sales tax uh for the fuel this one time for a temporary period of time to help out people when it's really hurting them. We can make do without a million dollars. We're gonna have a million dollars a loss. That's true. We have, right now, we're looking in ARPA for about a million dollars to help with payments to employees. We haven't been able to figure out exactly the plan and how we can do that under the ARPA funds, but that's that's still only gonna be a Band-Aid. We still, we're gonna have to look at this really hard, but I'm committed to both giving people a break, a small break on their taxes for fuel, and I'm committed to not raising our real property taxes. I voted no on the budget before because it was raising taxes too much. We can figure this out. We have about ten million dollars in our budget that is sitting there. I I'm sorry, not in our budget, our general fund. We can make this work to do both for this year. And I would ask that you support it. I don't understand why people wouldn't support it.
Thank you. Supervisor Leggett, you want?
If I can just follow up. And so I spoke with the other vendor in the town of Chester there who runs a convenience store and sees customers day in, day out. And I go, are people gonna see savings on this? And he goes, no. No, they'll never, they will not register that um to them. They they purchase as they purchase. It's the spending of things. I'm doing the calculations, twenty five thousand miles a year, uh twenty some odd miles a gallon, five twenty five mile miles per gallon, five dollars a gallon. Uh you're gonna save about a dollar a week. About a dollar a week is what we're talking about. So when we're talking about helping people, you know what the main concern is? The big concern that is all looming before us? Fuel, oil prices, propane prices. When we come into the heating season, that is when the hurt is going to happen. And we really should be concentrating our efforts on how to be able to relieve some of that hurt. That is the big one. We cannot escape that. We can say, you know what? I'm not gonna take that extra trip uh for another five miles. I'm going to do something else. I'm going to save that money. But you are going to have to heat your house and keep yourself warm this winter. And that is what's going to be our serious financial problem. That is where people are really going to hurt.
Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna admit, I'm I I was staunchly against this when it was first proposed. Um I felt like it was a temporary measure that might actually have negative implications in the long run. You know, as as Craig just alluded to, come winter, yes, people are gonna be paying more for heating oil, but then they're going to see an increase in their in their automobile gas as as our tax abatement expires. But I I you know, and I also felt like this was a time when we should be incentivizing really adoption of cleaner technologies, driving less. You know, if we're talking about how to use excess sales tax money, maybe maybe we should be supporting Greater Glens Falls Transit, um you know, to expand their their offerings to people who currently don't have that as an option. Um what about expanding the bike share program? There's a there's a lot of different things we could do with extra sales tax in addition to um increasing our 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 base salary for our employees. Um another thing would be to hire extra people in the planning department to help towns uh access funding to create create more bikeable, walkable communities. You know, I mean, there's just so many ways we can go. But but I started to talk to people and what I kept hearing over and over again is um not the kind of long range planning that my head was getting wrapped up in. It was concern over today, the here and the now, the the making choices um between buying gas for their car or or putting, you know, some groceries in a bag. People people aren't thinking the long range. And and I I I'm not judging on that in any way, shape or form. They're thinking about today. And and so I'm going to support this because I I'm listening to my constituents and I I didn't have anybody say, don't do that. I don't think it's a good idea. So you know, I urge you to get out there and talk to people. Uh it it may be temporary. It may not be perfect, um but it's what we can offer right here and right now. And and it will help even our employees who, some of them, you know, come from my community. They drive an awful long way to work and uh it might make it a little bit easier for them to get there.
Supervisor Conover?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I very much support the thinking of I um supervisor McDevitt and supervisor Leggett regarding this issue. I mean, say a million dollars, say it slowly. On a thousand employees, that's a thousand dollars per employee. On FTs, if it's nine hundred, it's more than that for employee. I very much support, Peter, the idea of taking that revenue and putting it in some type of lockbox for our employees. I would support legislation. You were to advance legislation in that regard. You, President Leggett, you'd have my complete support on legislation directed at that. As to the comment, we can do both. Well, the problem with that is you go to the fund balance, you go into the general taxpayer. Whereas on the sales tax, huge percentage of this comes from our visitor traffic, which helps support our general tax base and the cost of government. So there's an excellent article in the Lake George Mirror, I think it was last month or the previous month, that um quoted the New York Times and the um US Chamber of Commerce and others uh that recommended uh against uh this idea. They had characterizations of it, but I'm not gonna offer those today. I think the people that are offering this are ju- are genuinely believe in what they're doing and um but I think the the better way, the better math that's been highlighted here is to take this, let's put this in in a way for our employees that were here tonight. Uh we all heard their message. We all felt their pain. Let's take this million dollars and let's put it aside and uh let's try to do something very positive, not only for our employees, but also directly uh at the benefit of of our property taxpayers. Because in the end, they're the ones that um that um pay the bills. Thank you. So I I I will be voting against this proposal, but I will support an alternative proposal, hopefully that will be coming down the pike, that will look to uh take these resources and apply them in a in a creative way. Thank you.
Okay, supervisor Beatty, did you?
Yeah.
Want to respond?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh a couple of things. First of all, I thought we want tourists, but maybe we don't. Some supervisors obviously want to punish them for coming into Warren County. Personally, I don't, but that that's a supervisor's position, so be it. This is money surplus. Let me say that again, it's surplus.
Define surplus?
S U R P L U.
No, that's
I know it's supervisor. I'll wait till you compose yourself. But here's the thing, this is surplus money and as a uh as a as a supervisor in this county, we have over nine billion dollars right now in surplus. Over five million from last year, over three million currently, three point two million this year, and that's giving three point two million to the towns, which they argue fifty percent of that. So we have over nine million dollars in surplus. We have a lot of need, you're done right. You know, it's kind of funny, the CSEAs came here, I've been in contact with them, been a supporter of them getting more money. And now I see other supervisors want to. I applaud that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. uh boat landing and so forth. Thank you for jumping on board and trying to take care of our county employees. A little late, but that better late than never. So the bottom line is, the residents need us to show that we're taking actions to let them keep more of their money. Keep their money. This is their money. If we want to overtax and keep taxing, keep taxing people, they're dead, people leave. The state of New York thought it was worth the effort, despite what the New York Times may have thought. The state of New York thought it was worth giving them a sixteen cents a gallon break. Thirteen counties unanimously thought the same thing. So you know, we we can debate all we want on where the money goes and how it goes here or there. The bottom line is, are we gonna try to do something to help the residents of Warren County? Or we gonna try to say, well, what if we did this? What if we did that? Yeah, I'm all for the CSEA getting more money. I'm also for a number of other projects, but this is tax money. All I'm saying is let them keep some of their money in their pockets. It's as simple as that. Let them keep their own money. I don't think government does a great job when we take money from taxpayers. We, there are services that are needed, but I think letting them keep some of their own money makes sense. And the people who keep calling me up and telling me, saying, why won't these people pass that? I said, ask your supervisor. Ask them. So that's that's why I got
Supervisor Wild. Supervisor McGowan, you're first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is uh really a good debate and uh you know, brings up a lot of questions and um and it answers a lot. Uh but on your um uh chairman, on yours in South Glens Falls, I will tell you that the average in South Glens Falls has always been four to five cents cheaper for as long as I can remember. It, you know, uh like I said, I know if I'm going south, I'll cross over. I mean, the other day, I put a hundred and seventy five dollars in my truck. I was at quarter tank and it brought me to seven eighths of a tank. Hundred and seventy five dollars to go to work. I'm not complaining. I'm eating it. I think that this three months, if if we can help, if it's a I still bend over and pick up a penny as much as it hurts. Heads or tails, doesn't matter to me because a hundred of them are a dollar, all right? Are we losing out on some tax money? Yes, but I think we can work on other ways of increasing that money and and you know, bringing in the tourism, looking like we're trying to to help the people, I think it's a good thing. So I'm in support of this. And unfortunately, there will be some gas station people that will probably take advantage of it and keep the prices. I've seen it in Queensberry uh right there in Ridge between Snoko and Stewarts. And Stewarts was, you know, say five dollars and Snoko was five twenty five. But the next day I went there, Snoko was four ninety nine and Stewarts was still at five dollars. So you know, it's a competitive uh market on corners to corners. It's really, so the guy across the street's getting it, the other guy's gonna try to get it too, and they're gonna keep it. So if you, if they start lowering their prices, you know, now, just on, it sounds like you have four good gas stations up there, all right? We have probably, you know, forty, you know? So it gets a little competitive, but but you start dropping, you start seeing your competitors and they follow. So I think three months at this, that to help out our taxpayers is a uh is an admirable thing to do. Thank you.
I know supervisor Wild wants to speak and then supervisor Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I I'm not asking
I, I'm not asking to vote yes or no for this resolution. I'm asking for us to, to not debate with opinion, but to debate with facts. The supervisor from Queensberry was saying something, I don't know the exact words, but it's math. It's a complicated math problem. We know that there's a full, a, a market-based pricing going on. I'm all for giving our residents a break, if they can get it, but I, I would, we're being delicate, we're, we're in delicate of our duty, diligence, our duty, whatever. You guys hopefully will understand what I'm talking about at nine o'clock at night.
That's all right.
But all I'm asking for is this, we delayed this, we do some math, we understand that we're going to give the benefit to our constituents. Because I have doubts whether or not that's going to happen, especially when I hear the math is complicated. And especially when I hear that we can't regulate what the individual gas stations are going to do. They'll decide. And it is supply and demand. So, let's delay this until the next monthly board meeting, have some discussions, have some math, do some research about what's been done in prior years and prior indications. We talked about the New York Times, some of the other magazines that have done research on this to say whether it really provides the benefits to our constituents. We're going to throw a million dollars out because it feels good, it sounds good. Let's make sure it's good before we vote for it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and send this to a committee so that it can be discussed and resolved prior to next month's board meeting.
Mr. Wild, we're in discussion phase. I want to let Supervisor Thomas have his say. And then Supervisor Driscoll, last, last comment and then we'll go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I echo what Supervisor Wild just said. I, I think we need more information. I, I'm hearing nine cents and I'm hearing a million dollars and then I'm hearing the prices on the wholesale price and, you know, I, I'm all for helping people with gas. I think, I think that we have numbers of how many visitors we get and approximately what kind of sales tax we get from those visitors. Maybe we can extrapolate that to gasoline, I, I don't know. But, but there's a lot of, and, and then you got the issues with the county, you know, the, the increasing the pay, you know? There's, there's a whole list of things that, that don't come to mind right at the moment, but there's, there's a bunch of them that I've heard the first part of this year that we, you know, we'll suck up that $9 million in a hurry. But, but the thing is, it, it'll feel good this time around, but a couple of years from now, you're going to be wondering where the hell you're going to get that $9 million. And I, I just think that we need to analyze this more clearly with some factual information and maybe I'll support it, maybe I won't, I don't know.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. And this is the last comment or? Yeah. I'll, I'll try to make it, and I, I've heard a lot of good comments from, from both sides, but I get out and, and listen to constituents. But my definition of constituents has always been a little bit different than many of my colleagues. Glens Falls Hospital, the county's largest employer, is located in the fifth ward in Glens Falls. I consider each employee that comes to the hospital to work as, as a constituent. I have responsibility to them. I listen to, to people, but I also take the approach professionally also to chase after people. My wife drives me nuts. If I see someone at the supermarket, I go over and ask them, "How are things, anything that, that I can do, the county can do for you?" That's what's important to them, that, that you care. Tonight, I've, I've witnessed good people acting in a mean spirit, demeaning to differences of opinion when I'm out in the community and, and I'm out a lot, a lot more than I'm, I'm home, unfortunately. Unfortunately, sometimes I enjoy a lot of the things that I do in the community. People are really questioning, I think the supervisor from Queensberry mentioned this earlier. They want us to be accountable to them. They want us to act professional. They want us to act cordial, not compromise our, our beliefs and, and opinions and, and what we're hearing from our, from the public, but they want us to behave the way that our moms and dads would, would have raised us to behave. And unfortunately, it's not the first time that I've heard it and, and the public who are watching in or, or talking to people who watch in, they're, they're watching us. They're listening to us and, and they're really saying, "What the heck are these folks doing?" Whether we approve it or, or not, whether we approve it tonight or not, saving a few dollars is, is, is down the list as far as I'm concerned, as far as what they expect of, of us as Warren County supervisors. And I, I think that maybe it's, maybe we've got to go home this evening and, and maybe just give some thought to, to that. I know that I, I think about it every weekend when I'm at church and I, I wonder, you know, wherever you choose to worship, if you choose to worship, you know, that the, what we're hearing in the sermons is going in one ear and out the other when we come into this building, unfortunately. And I, I don't mean that to be critical of any one individual, it's us as a whole, just like there's no I in, in team. It, it, it's on us all to, to basically start acting a, a little bit more civil, debate, argue, have differences of opinion, don't compromise your beliefs. I'm not asking you to do that, but just, you know, act a little bit more civil and, and in the long run, I think we'll get a lot more accomplished. So, thank you for hearing me.
Okay. That's it, end discussion. Any other discussion, any other resolutions?
Question. Question, Mr. Chair, on this.
Oh, excuse me. I've been informed that we have a motion to table from Supervisor Wild. Do we have a second on the motion to table? Let's do a roll call.
And what committee is tableing this? What committee are you sending?
What committee would you like this to go back to Supervisor Wild?
I'd say Economic Growth and Development, but I'm not sure that fits because I lead that. So, some people might have an issue with that. Any takers?
Finance.
Any takers? Finance?
I can't come back to next board meeting, I'm sorry. I don't want to.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Can we have discussion on the table?
No discussion on tables, I always.
Discussion on a table when you go to another.
Is there a discussion on table? Okay, there is discussion on table. Go ahead.
If I asked to table everything I needed more information on, we'd be here all by. We'd never get anything passed because I would, I've got five in front of me that I'm ready to abstain on because I don't have enough information, but I'm not sitting here asking all of you to table it so that we can have that discussion. And to put it back to finance, isn't fair to my constituents. Again, our committees are not representative of all of our, of our communities. I would ask if you're going to table, at which I will oppose, that you bring it back to our next two-week board meeting. Let's not get under the wire again and miss a date.
We're not going to miss a date.
Well, we may, who knows? So, why can't it just go in two weeks?
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to table, let's do a roll. Any other discussion? Okay. Amanda, call the vote, please.
Okay, this is on the motion to table, resolution 313. Ms. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seber?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girassi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
I'll vote to table as long as we finish the discussion at the next board meeting. So, I vote yes to table.
Okay, the motion to table only has 451 votes in favors, that motion.
Okay. Roll call on it. So, we'll do a roll call vote? Okay. All right, any other discussions? Yes, Supervisor Seber.
I'll save all of you from a motion to table and all of things I'd like to abstain and get more and so on, but I understand it's a late night. I would ask though that we put over to legislative and rules a discussion to have more night meetings. Clearly, there's a need from our public and I hope that we can all agree that that's a topic we should talk about. And I, I would ask that that be put on there. But the resolution 304, which was asked for a roll call, I'll be abstaining on that because I would like some more information about the formula. I was not able to attend the meeting. I also have some questions about enrollment and chargebacks and how particularly chargebacks are working with Qatar students and the international programs that are happening at the college. So, I am abstaining on that one. On 279, this is one I would normally ask to table, but I'm going to sit here and say I'm going to support it reluctantly, Chairman Girassi, because I do think that when our villages, when the village of Lake George, our towns, are asking for an additional police presence for events, that it is not at a no additional cost to the county. There are many third-party and in-kind expenses, as you know, that go into police cars, equipment, everything that, that we're able to provide our officers to keep them safe and do their jobs and provide that public service, but just paying the overtime cost doesn't equal a no cost. And that's how this resolution reads. And I bring it up because we'll be talking at criminal justice about an increased need for security in the county. And one of the reasons the sheriff brought that up was because towns have been asking for law enforcement present in their communities and I'm wondering, are we going to have an inimmeasurable agreement for that? Glens Falls clearly pays for their own police department in the city and if we're going to be providing this, I assume then the towns will be contributing or how will this work if it's at no cost, especially those third-party costs? So, I'll abstain from that vote, but out of respect for my colleague who has so much experience in criminal justice, I want to ask for it to be tabled. On resolution 288, I do have a question on that. I don't understand why we're doing a full one-year contract for mom's meals. If I take the amount that's being asked to be budgeted, that's 12,683 meals, I'd be much more comfortable if we were to amend that resolution to a six-month resolution. We've talked a lot about mom's meals. After the last meeting, I asked our chairman about countryside. I know we haven't had a chance to follow up on that, but I do think there's lots of ways that we can work very hard to get back to making those meals and not having the mom's meals deliveries. I don't know if there's flavor for that on this board to do that, but without that modification, there is no way I can support 12,683 mom's meals for another year. And I'm going fast, I know you're all tired and I'm not asking for a table, but if anyone would like to talk more about these resolutions, I hope that you do. 277, I know that's one again that I'd ask for comparison to other counties and more information, but I'm not going to out of respect to Supervisor Brennan, who chairs that committee. We are in a recession. I don't want to support increasing any of the fees right now. And if we're going to talk about how we generate money here for this county, this is one that I think we need to think about how we're going to treat people that want to move into this county. They're looking at us and making a determination whether this is where they want to live, work and play. Lastly, I do have a comment on 302 and 301, and I am a member of criminal justice. I don't recall reading anything about this. I understand here it went through personnel and perhaps someone, if it needs to go into executive session to tell me about this, but usually we have a discussion on salaries that are being offered to people, but I'm very confused by this. I don't know about it as a member of the committee. I did attend those committee meetings and I know there's other supervisors that have confusion on those. So, the ones I'm looking for change on, if anyone wants to support it, is 288 and an explanation on 301 and 302. Thank you.
Amanda, can you explain the salary ones?
So, 301 and 302 were on the personnel agenda. They were under Jackie's items as corrections. So, those were, they, those were on other resolutions. If you look, it, it refers to the resolutions that were amending. So, the salaries that were on those original amending, the table resolutions were incorrect because they're dollar amounts. I cannot change them as a clerk's correction, so they had to come back through as corrections. The first one, it was off by, one of them was off by $1. The other one was the public defender's salary. So, what happened was the current public, or the past public defender had one salary when she announced, after she was leaving, you decreased the salary in between filling. So, what happened was when we brought in the new public defender, we decreased the salary more than, it had already been decreased. So, when technically, we had to increase it to what we were paying him because it had already been decreased to, I think it was 114 or something like that, and we had to increase it to the amount. So, that wasn't caught when the resolution was written, so those are just adjusting to what the salaries should be. There's no, no adjustment technically, it's just a correction. But as, I, normally those are types of things that I would do as a clerk's correction, but if it has to do with a dollar amount, I can't touch it.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate that explanation on those and I'll support those. On 288, Chairman, could you please just address the year requirement for mom's meals?
The mom's meals? That, that, they asked for a year extension. Are you suggesting something less than a year?
I am, because I, I, we went through this last year. We've had a lot of feedback on it. I haven't heard additional information on it, but for an entire year? I'm hoping that we can get to a point where we won't have to be doing this, but a year seems.
We've had a couple of proposals presented to us, one by the Salvation Army about taking over the cooking of, of the meals and then we've also talked about countryside, but I do know, speaking with some of the employees at countryside right now, they struggle to, to find enough people to work in the kitchen. So, in order for us to, I think this is a stopgap measure by the department, just to cover the bases and I'm now referring to county administrator.
I understand that. I guess I'm just wondering if it can be modified to the six months so that it's not a full year. I do see it's billed monthly, so I don't see the problem.
I don't think we can because these have to, the contracts have to be awarded according to the bid specifications and I am pretty sure that that was part of the bid that, that we asked for, a one-year contract with options to renew, I think.
But that was the bid from last year, right? So, this is a renewal. I think I opposed it last year too.
It's the same bid.
Yeah, right. So, we didn't go back around changing. Anyway, I'll be opposing 288. Thanks.
Any?
Chairman?
You're on.
Yeah, just making sure that 288 is a roll call.
All right.
And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. On 282, I just wanted to ask for people's support there. I think that that is going to be a very exciting change for the entire county and to my colleague in Johnsburg, some additional, you know, public transportation is certainly going to help. Not only are people who have trouble paying for transportation for a car, but also for the environment to help get some additional cars off the road. And on that note, I do, well, never mind, I won't bring that up. There was one more. Since our superintendent is still here, amazingly, I would like to ask our superintendent to provide an update on the Sagamore Wall retaining project.
Sure.
I feel like every month, we're getting more and more costs on that situation.
And I believe Supervisor Wild, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir. One quick question.
Your hand down.
Well, no.
I'm not done yet, if you don't mind.
I'm just trying to keep.
I had mine up for 288.
Me too.
So, gas costs have increased. We did put that project out to bid. The bids came back at double what we expected they were going to be. We expected it somewhere about $650,000 to $700,000. It came in at one and a half million. We gave it back to the engineer to redesign, to come up with a better solution. Based on the bidders, one bidder that we discussed the project with, the reason for the bid being so high is because they had no room to work. They would have to put their equipment right in the middle of Sagamore Road, which that would not benefit the Sagamore at all. So, we asked them to go back and do a redesign. They're going back to do the redesign now. We have some right-of-way costs from the Waters Edge Marina, which is right next to where we're going to be doing the work. And they just met with DEC yesterday and the Army Corps to go through the permitting to put fill in, in, in the waters, the waters of state of New York, which would be Lake George.
I'm, just one more. On 288, since that thing doesn't start until September, I would ask that we table it and we can bring it back and talk about it next time.
Motion to table?
Yeah.
I would second that, much like the proposal to table the other one, because we don't need till August or whatever. Why can't we table this one and we'll get some more information and avoid a year?
Your motion is second to table. Okay?
And a roll call on the table, please.
We'll do a roll call. Okay, discussion. Uh, kind of discussion.
Ask a question about that. I, I have no issue with that, but, uh, as we've heard, sometimes, uh, contracts and agreements require certain periods of time. And, uh, if we table it, uh, uh, for an action for September, maybe, uh, they've got a, a sixty-day or a ninety-day, uh, uh, period that they have to hear back from us regarding that. So without, without knowing the, the details of the, um, of the contract, um, I'd be a little hesitant to, um, uh, table it and, and, and be stuck with, with no, uh, insurance policy.
Okay. Discussion at two eighty-eight. Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, uh, we, we've been, uh, dealing with, uh, the Meals on Wheels and, uh, employees for, for years here. And this is a, uh, uh, this was a holdover. It seemed to, you know, be going well. Um, but I'm kind of excited with the, uh, the, one of the problems we have is retaining employees. And, uh, like I said, uh, if, if you're going to put meals, uh, you go to fast food and make a lot more money. So I believe with the, the increased, um, salaries that will be coming hopefully down the road that we'll be discussing, uh, that will help on this. This also, this resolution is per meal. So as we move forward and reopen up our kitchens or, or, or come, it, it, it's just a price per meal. So if we start using less, it's not a ma, you know, it, it, am I wrong in that? That it was a maximum price. But if we don't use them, we have the savings and we can put the money back in with us. So I understand this by a little bit better because, you know, we, we have dealt with it for so long. So I'm comfortable with moving forward with this, with the agreement. So we have it in place because I do, uh, agree with, uh, Supervisor Driscoll is that these contracts do take some time. But it's, we only pay if we use it. So as we just decrease it, as our kitchens open, the, the savings, you know, will be there. So.
Okay. Just so I know, Supervisor Wild, Supervisor Thomas, Supervisor Leggett. I've got a look to my right more. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, two eighty-eight. I was just curious, are there any consequences for us not approving the resolution tonight?
I, I,
Maybe it's for our administrator or county attorney.
When, I did go back in the agenda documents to verify that the RFP that we put out, uh, is, is what determined the year extension. So that we, we stick to the, what was bid out. Now, the, to answer your question, uh, when we first entered into this agreement with mom's meals, uh, we had, uh, Chester and Warrensburg, which also includes Lake George, um, uh, receiving these. And Supervisor McGowan's correct that you pay up to what you use. Since then, uh, Chester and Warrensburg have come off. You only have Lake George now. It's, it's a, it's a problem with, um, uh, drivers. Uh, so hopefully by the time September first, which would be the first day of the extension rolls around, hopefully we won't need it anymore. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I mean, as long as the board takes action before September first, I,
Yeah, I would prefer August first, just so we have time. We can do it quickly. I can't guarantee that the contractor or vendor will be as quick. So it would be nice to have a little grace period for the vendor.
Supervisor Thomas?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm the motion to table on two eighty-eight. This is unwise, as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's a, it's a pay as you use it and it's a safety net to make sure that the seniors get their meals. Now, if you want to play around with that, I guess we, we did that last year, if I recall, and, uh, you know, we had problems. So we can do that again, I guess.
Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you. The administrator answered, uh, the question that, that this is because we do not have the drivers to get the meals to, to Lake George or else we could produce the meals if, uh, at perhaps countryside in order to be able to deliver. So this is a safety net. We should have a safety net in, in place.
So we have a motion to table. Any other discussion at two eighty-eight? Let's do a roll call vote and a motion to table.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yeah, I don't see any problem in table on it, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Conover?
Uh, no.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Girasi?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Okay, the motion to table fails. There were only three hundred votes, uh, three hundred and seven votes in favor.
Okay.
Motion fails.
Any other discussion on resolutions? Can we vote? Uh, any comment to the public? Uh, Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you. Just making sure two eighty-eight's a roll call then.
Yes, it's a roll call.
Thank you.
Um, Don, is there anybody on the public still on?
Hi, Chairman Garrity. No, believe it or not, there is not anyone, uh, people are watching on YouTube. They're not commenting.
No one's awake. Can't believe they're not watching.
Okay, let's load on resolutions. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes. Let's do it.
Resolution two seventy-four, making supplemental appropriations. Ms. Hogan? Ms. Hogan is waving your,
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver? Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution two seventy-five, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty-two. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution two eighty-eight, uh, authorizing extension of agreement, agreement with Perfu, Fu, Per Foods LLC DBA Moms Meals. Ms. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Six hundred and twenty-one votes in favor. Resolution two ninety-eight. Uh, this is amending tables of organization and Warren County salary compensation plan for twenty twenty-two to create delete positions within the Department of Social Services. This, um, does require a two-thirds majority. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred seventy-five votes in favor. Resolution three oh four, uh, approving tentative operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for Adirondack Community College and providing for public hearing. Excuse me, Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Abstained.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstained.
Mr. Beatty?
Abstained.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with six hundred eight votes in favor. Resolution three oh five, authorizing appropriation of funds from the vehicle reserve to departmental budgets. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver? Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Would it be okay to do three, three oh six, seven, and eight? Those are capital projects together, if there are any affect. Board? Six, three oh six, seven, and eight.
Three oh six is increasing capital project H three eight six, three oh seven, increasing capital project H three nine zero, and three oh eight, increasing capital project H four oh one. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. All three of those.
Okay.
Um, I, let's see. Resolution three eleven, amending tables of organization in Warren County salary and compensation plan for twenty twenty-two to create a position in the planning and community development department. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Abstained.
Mr. Beatty?
We're on three eleven?
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to, uh, vote no on that.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Hey. I just want to double check it real quick because it looks like we're short by ten votes. That does not achieve a two-thirds majority. There were six hundred and fifty-eight votes in favor. We require two, I'm sorry, six hundred and sixty-eight. So that does fail. Um, and resolution three thirteen, that's on the gas tax. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Girasi?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
That resolution fails. There are only 484 votes in favor.
Collective on the rest, all of those in favor? Say hi. Over to the floor, public comment. Any public comment, Supervisor? Thank you for sticking in with us.
I know it's late, but I just have to make a quick comment, and it's a follow-up to what Supervisor Seber said about DMV. How our residents are being treated there is an absolute travesty. It is a nightmare situation. We are losing money. We are losing people. They are, I can't express, I see it every day. I'm there all the time. How our residents are being treated there is unacceptable, period. My nephew came here from California. He moved here from California last month. He went to DMV to register his car, his pickup truck, his box truck, and his tractor trailer, and to change over his CDL license. He went there four times and could not get it done. He went to Washington County. He was done in 45 minutes and wrote a check to Washington County for 1,800 bucks. I, I, there's nothing more to say. It needs to be changed.
Any other public comments?
Thank you, please.
Chairman?
I just wanted to remind everyone that there is an early voting site in Glens Falls now at City Hall, which is very exciting. And also to remind everyone and invite you down to LARAC this weekend.
Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you. I have two things. First, if the county attorney is still there, I think it would be really nice if he would update everyone on the executive order that allows remote participation.
The exec, if that's okay with the chairman, the clerk of the board and the county administrator and I received notification that the executive order 11 was extended by executive order 11.7 for 30 days. I believe July 14th is the new extension date. And as a result of that, it's being interpreted that the new open meetings law statute regarding video conferencing is being stayed in favor of the existing open meetings law, which this board has been working under for many, many, many months at this point. So as of today, remote participation continues to be available through July 14th, subject to any further extensions by the governor.
Thank you. And the second thing is, this, last week at the Adirondack Park Agency meeting, I was delighted to advance to public comment a resolution amending the generic unit management plan for campgrounds and day use that will help to make permanent watercraft decontamination stations. These are really important initiatives that help us keep our waters free of invasive species. I often get asked how effective the exit, the, the one that exits between 17 and 18 is. So I did get some numbers to share with you very quickly, in the hopes that, that you'll let people know that, that they can stop there and they need to stop there and get their, their boats cleaned. It's very, very important that we keep pushing the clean drain dry method of protecting our lakes. Over in, between 19, 2019, 2020, and 2021, over 4,000 boats were inspected on the Northway. Of those 4,000, 1,400 were cleaned of invasive species. So that's 1,400 boats that did not get dropped into Warren County or Adirondack waters with invasive species on them. So please keep pushing clean, drain, dry. Very, very important. Thank you.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman. As many people know, the summertime is the, is the hardest time for families as far as food insecurity. Kids are home from school. I'm pleased to announce that in the town of Johnsburg, Adirondack Community Outreach Center in North Creek will be doing a, a program to provide breakfast and lunch to children up to age 18, 21, I believe. It's if it's a disabled young adult. I believe that the town of Warrensburg is, will be doing a program again, as they've done for many years in the past. I haven't got confirmation about that. And the city of Glens Falls is the third partner that, that provides that, that program through the Community Action Agency, Polities, and other organizations. So thank you to, to those and, and support your local food practices, especially during the, the summer months. Thanks.
Supervisor Strau?
Yes, thank you. Two things. One is the town of Queensberry did pass a new law that says that Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes are allowed on all roads, pathways, bike trails, et cetera, that bicycles are allowed in the town of Queensberry. And I think there's, the city needs to pass legislation doing the same, as well as Lake George. If the bikeway is going to be clear and usable for Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes. Also, I got a letter in reference to OMH and that, you know, we asked that the state do help us out with the costs involved in that. Matthew Stimson says, "Thank you for taking the time to reach out to me with your concerns", highlighting the S Y I 2021 adopted budgets requirement for counties to pay 100% of OMH state operation costs for individuals receiving court-mandated mental health competency services at state-operated forensic psychiatric centers. Having voted in opposition to this bill, I too share the concerns you have outlined therein and generally do not support unfunded mandates onto local governments. I will take your concerns into consideration, make the appropriate appeals echoing those concerns for a more appropriate balance in the servicing of state programs now and in the future.
Supervisor Seber?
Thank you. Two quick questions or comments here. My supervisor from Glens Falls brings up a really good point about food inequities and what is going on right now in our community. And I would ask that this board come together and think about uniting for a food drive. I think that it would be a nice way for all of us to work together, and I hope to see every single supervisor take part on that. But I want to just point out that I do believe, Supervisor, that you are talking to your constituents, but many are making a decision between their gas in their car versus what they're buying at the store to feed their family. So if you think a dollar doesn't matter, I can attest to you, as a single mother, at some point in my life, it matters. And I'm very disappointed to see that we did not move forward tonight with helping majority of our people in our community. And I will just add, that I hope, given the fact that we are now looking at not with the gas prices and having, having those discussions, I'm very disappointed that our discussion about legislative, our discussion about Zoom meetings and remote meetings went only back to legislative and rules. It was the intent of this board, Mr. Chairman, you had said it would go to legislative rules to have a discussion, and then it would come back before this board. This is a full board decision, and we should be supporting people in saving any way they can to be able to come here and participate remotely or participate in person if they can. But I, I would ask that as the governor continues to extend these executive orders, that we are going to notify the public and our board.